Commission work session, it is Tuesday, July 28th, 5:30. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, this evening we have two items on our agenda. The first one is the 2023 sales tax ballot question options, and Jason Hilders will be our presenter this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I will share my screen and Chris start the presentation. So, two weeks ago, we initially had a conversation about the sales tax option. Last week, we were ran out of time essentially to talk about this. So since then, city administration has had a little bit more time to talk about the tax and the potential question. So we generated four options for you to consider this evening, and we'll get into the details of those here in a second. We need to have, if we're going to place it on the ballot for November, we need to turn this into Riley County no later than September 1st. So previously, we had talked about a overarching statement relative to pandemic relief as part of the ballot question, with a primary focus on debt, property tax relief, public infrastructure, jobs, and workforce housing was introduced at July 4th at our meeting. So our efforts this evening are trying to define this question a little further and also determine whether or not a policy resolution is necessary to identify the intent and purpose of the tax. The four options that we prepared for you all this evening to look at generally have themes about them that are very similar. The first two questions that we prepared did not have percentages associated with the use of the tax. In addition, we really focused on the first question that was delivered to you all back in the packet for the 21st that we didn't get to cover. That's the same question, which is option number one, that you may have seen now for a week or so, a little bit over a week. It didn't have any percentages. It highlighted the pandemic relief, it highlighted the property tax relief, but then it focused on debt, public infrastructure, economic development, and workforce housing. The second question starts to get into revenues not necessarily going towards pandemic relief or necessarily straight into property tax relief, but it does address debt as property tax relief, public infrastructure, and also economic development and workforce housing. There's not a lot of difference in these questions, but I'll bring them up here in a second. But it's really about what the revenues in the question say it's going to be used for. But prior to the revenues being delineated, there's actually a purpose in each question that speaks to that overarching pandemic relief, property tax relief type of verbiage. Option three and four attempt to create percentages associated with these categories. And most of this is being done in an effort to, one, give the voter, the person at the ballot, a better understanding as to what they're voting for. Some feedback we got on the .3 sales tax that failed in November of 19 was about not necessarily knowing how long the tax would last and what exactly they were voting on. With the percentages associated with the categories, you start to get down the path of perhaps not needing a policy resolution to fully define how those funds would be distributed. The question itself could actually dictate those terms, and that's really where three and four head, with 70% in the option three being somewhat of a combination of that existing debt and that future debt. With workforce housing coming into the question, we wanted to be sensitive to any confusion about debt itself, whether that's existing debt, such as the conference center that's been with us now since 2013, or I guess 2015. The conference center opened in 2012, but we didn't start servicing that debt until 2015. But that debt's going to continue for 20 years, and that continues to be part of our bond and interest and our struggle on an annual basis from a property tax perspective. And we've used economic development, we've used transient yes tax in the past to help pay for that particular debt. And then the future debt, the public infrastructure that we keep highlighting in all our conversations with projects on the horizon, infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, lighting, streetscape, landscaping, all those amenities and features that make and create the sense of place in our districts, whether it's downtown, Aggieville, or North Campus. It provides that 70% for that combination of existing and future debt. Then it moves towards 20% for jobs and job creation, and then 10% for workforce housing. Clearly, option three peeled 10% off of option four, where we were originally with 60, 20, 20. When we talked to the commission about that split, we had 60% for public infrastructure, 20% going to debt, and 20% going to jobs. When workforce housing got introduced at that meeting, there was, we really didn't talk about what percentage that workforce housing would come from. Does it come from public infrastructure? Did it come from debt, or did it come from jobs? We've written it as a percentage of the jobs in this option, but it wouldn't necessarily have to be there. If you want, if you like option four and the way it's structured and you wanted to make workforce housing as part of any of the other categories, we could clearly do that too. But as I mentioned, option three was an attempt to take it, take it from the public infrastructure and debt, that 10%, carve it off, leave 20% for the jobs, and really focus the 70% back on the existing and future debt. Would it help to bring up those questions at this point, or is that enough of an explanation for you at this point? I can, I can keep moving, we can bring the questions up later too, if you'd like to.
Okay, I'll open it up for the Commissioners to decide. I prefer going through the whole thing and then discussing all of them at the end. I think you probably have lots of feedback, but do any of the Commissioners have questions for Jason at this point?
No, I've got, I've got the, I've read the questions, they were in the packet, so it's not a problem, you can just continue with the show.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. So our previous meeting, again, I highlighted the 2020/60 that the commission seemed to be supportive of with debt, economic development, public infrastructure, and then that workforce housing introduction, and just is it a percentage of the ECODEVO, or is it a percentage of something else? That options for the split then become part of the question, do we combine the debt so it's not to confuse the voter when they get in the poll in terms of existing and future? Is it all really just debt in the bond and interest fund? The answer is yes, it's just a matter of timing when that would occur. Do we carve off that percentage for workforce housing out of, out of that? And do we maintain the 20% for the jobs? That's, that's where I really wanted you to, at the end, provide feedback on those, on those topics. So for the question three in the 70/20/10, we went ahead and expanded on each of these percentages with a little bit of a better understanding. And I mentioned a little bit about the streets, the parking, but when you, when you think about projects in the community, airport runway at MBAC corridor, Aggieville, Miller Parkway, which hit our debt rolls not too long ago, West Anderson, which will come online as debt in the near future, two major projects that we did for east-west connections on the west side of town, Douglas Rex Center obviously has a property tax impact, and the conference center, which obviously we have, for the expansion, we have transient yes tax plan, but that existing conference center is, is more in line with where we were talking about. On the job side of things, dedicated funding, the pursuit of additional jobs in Manhattan, leaving that at 20% or that 1.3 million, and then 10% for the workforce housing, which would be about 650K. And those programs and initiatives and developments that offer those housing opportunities for the workforce, and we'll, we'll get into that a little bit more here in a bit. The debt relief, so under this, this would be an opportunity for us to look, as I mentioned, at a lot of different projects. That 4.5 million would be a combination really of the 20% which was existing, and then trimming back that 3.9 million that was originally offered at the 60%, down to the 3.5. That'll, that, that, that 4.5 million is just over a seven and a half mil impact in terms of property tax relief. When you look at the debt relief on its own, that 1.3 million that we talked about, the 20% previously, that was right around the 2 mil range, and this, this kind of puts it again from an educational component, gets you a better understanding of where that existing and future debt will land for that 10-year period with this amount of money. It's pretty substantial. Jobs, again, keeping that consistent at 20% of 1.3 million. We know we've got some, some efforts on an annual basis that require positions to help foster those, those programs, but focusing then on, on funding the hunt with people and programs, that entrepreneurial support programs capturing that talent with the workforce recruitment. And then on the incentive side and the catalyst for those investments, looking for that company attraction, the expansion of existing, retaining existing, and those incentives and development that come along, whether it's a big company coming in like you've experienced in the past with multiple hundreds of jobs, multimillion dollar investment. But we're hearing more and more lately of people not wanting to make the major million dollar investments, looking for space to grow their businesses, whether that's a half dozen or a dozen employees, looking to rent space, but could turn out to be one of those major investors down the road. We've seen some great examples of that locally with some entrepreneurs who have just built tremendous businesses in Manhattan. And some of the tools that the Chamber's been talking to us about, and KSUIC about getting in early with the, these individuals and keeping them in Manhattan and not losing them to Kansas City, Chicago, Denver, and Dallas, just that commitment to the jobs. And then on the workforce housing, that $650,000 annually that we talked about, 10%, just coming up with that workforce housing strategy. There's multiple approaches. Lawrence has a dedicated sales tax that could be a great reference for us for housing, as well as many other communities, including Topeka and many other cities in Kansas that have workforce housing type of initiatives. Some of these involve redevelopment, revitalization, so areas of your community where you want to invest and see a certain type of product, but also could involve gap financing, first time home buyers, recognizing that there's a barrier to entry price-wise, and seeing what you could structure in a way to bridge that gap, to get people into their, their first homes in Manhattan. That will take additional resources. When we, when we look about economic development, there's a lot of money that's already committed by the community to economic development initiatives, and a lot of that is funding the staffing that it's required, and on the housing side, it would be similar. It would take additional finance and legal and management staff to implement a program like this, and that would be included in that 10%. So again, we talked about the why at our last meeting on the 14th, protecting against that property tax increase, but also keeping the appropriate mix of sales and property tax. We have a great poll factor here in Manhattan. A lot of people travel in to shop, taking advantage of that. We do over a billion dollars in sales annually historically, and 25% of that total comes from people that, that don't live in Manhattan. So the sales tax is always a great opportunity for us to allow our visitors and those who don't live here to help us keep our infrastructure viable and attractive. Recovering from the pandemic, we know this is going to be a sustained impact. I was pleased to see the sales tax reports today. We're only 4% down for our July receipts, which come from May. May and April were clearly months where we were shut down as a community, starting to reopen a little bit in May. You can see the retail trade, if you look through the comparisons, really pulled us through. It's the largest percentage of sales tax receipts that we collect are from retail trade, and they were up almost 5% over May of 19, which is pretty incredible, given the fact that virtually all the students that don't live here permanently were gone, and the graduations didn't take place, the hotels weren't full, just a number of different economic factors that we like to point to, and we, we realized only a 4% drop, pretty amazing numbers. But we know things are on the horizon, they're unpredictable. We hope we can maintain anywhere around 4% or 5% for the rest of the year in reductions, but that's anybody's guess at this point in time. But this would clearly allow us, not only for the remainder of this year, but 2021 and 2022, to put plans and strategies in place and allow that implementation to take, take its course well in advance when the tax currently expires at the end of 2022. And just keeping Manhattan viable, progressive, and attractive. We have a lot of projects and a lot of initiatives in the queue. We're, we're through 25 to 30% of the North Campus corridor. We're on the verge of making a major investment in Aggieville to bring it into a relevant state for investment privately. A lot of things just on the horizon that this, this question in November could really solidify the path forward. So this evening, trying to gain feedback from the commission on the four options, are you in favor of actually identifying the percentages? One thing I will clarify, I've been talking with legal, and Katie's on here as well, and she can expand on this. We wrote it, some of those questions as not in excess of, or not to exceed a certain amount in those percentages, and that could actually be reframed to approximately 70% or approximately 60%. Not to exceed or not above could, could indicate to some that you may not spend all that money there. That wasn't the case. It's really a qualifier, so legally, we're not challenged. If we say exactly 70% or exactly 60% in a certain category, and we would spend 69.8, it could, it could get a challenge associated with it that you didn't spend 70% and that's what your question said. So the qualifier gives you the flexibility, and if approximately fits that better than not to exceed or not above, that's something that legal was comfortable with as well. So should we include the percentages? What percentage is the 2020/60 preferred, the 10/20/70? Is that doable? And then the policy resolution, if we do include the percentages, perhaps we don't need the policy resolution in that debate surrounding that distribution of funds. If the percentages are clear and we have a path forward that's understandable, perhaps that policy resolution wouldn't be necessary. Mayor, that's what I have for you this evening, looking for that feedback. We have August 4th to also discuss this, if we'd like to continue that. August 11th, we have the Aggieville Parking Management Plan. You could also include something that night if we wanted to continue to talk. And then August 18th would be the legislative meeting, the last legislative meeting in August, where the commission could take action prior to delivering this to the county. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or take your feedback at this time.
Thanks, Jason. You know, I think one of the things before we get into deep discussion is, just for background information, that we've been discussing this for a couple of years, so it's not something new that just came up last week. The reason it was a surprise last week is because the pandemic happened and we had taken it off the table. We had discussions about this even in our retreat, we had discussions last year as well. The county and the city currently have a sales tax, and we decided it was, it would be best if city had it on their own. So those discussions have been going on for a while, and then it came back to the forefront last week. Even though I opted not to do it, there was enough majority of Commissioners that decided to move forward to have a conversation for having it on the November ballot. And so I think we're going to pursue that discussion, but I, I wanted to say, even though I had said no to moving it forward, I still have a lot of apprehensions, and I will get to those a little bit later. But I think it's good to have this discussion. I think this, this commission's probably going to move it forward and then dig into the details. I think the more details and more conversations we have, the better. So I'm glad we have a few others, more sessions to discuss this. I do like that you presented four options as opposed to one, and let's go with it. So there's lots of flexibility we can work with, with the options that are presented in front of us and to take back to the community as well. So with that, I'll open it up for questions and comments from the city Commissioners.
Had us all here, I'll, I'll get started. I'd be in favor of, I think, option three, the 70/20/10, for a couple of different reasons. One, if you're not going to have at least 20% for job creation, it's really hard to call it an economic development kind of a thing. And I think we need to save the 70% for, I didn't see you include the airport in your list of infrastructure things, but that was, would obviously be lumped in there too. Not that we need an airport right now hardly, but it's, but I think that between the 70% for the projects that are coming onboard that have been built already, and the ones that we want to continue to do, North Campus, Aggieville, and stuff like that, I think we're going to want 70% all available to us for that. And so that's, that's my thinking there. And I would go with the approximately 70%, approximately 20%, approximately, that gives you, you'd think 1% or 2% plus or minus, without people getting too excited about things. And, and I don't understa, I, I dozed off during the talk of why we may or may not need a resolution, but if you go with the percentages, we don't need a resolution. I'm, let's keep it simple there.
Thanks, Mark.
Erin, Lynda, Lynda Morse here, and I wanted to just touch base with Erin. We were the stronger proponents for some portion of this for workforce housing. And I wanted to, we didn't talk at all at that meeting about how much is, and so maybe we need to have that discussion tonight as a group, unless you have something you'd like to propose. 650,000 is more than I was initially thinking, so that's why I wanted to, to talk about it.
Well, I, I guess what I am thinking is, the language, language we saw before, but this language that divides it up is, I've got, I've gotten a little bit of feedback that I think makes some sense, that to have that separation for the workforce housing helps people kind of sort that out in their, in their minds, and like Commissioner Addusall kind of talked about too, that having that designated, if you go below 10, you're, I mean, it's, it starts to become a smaller and smaller portion of options here, where when you consider that what Jason presented, there's going to be some, some administration costs to run that, it's not going to be, you know, handed off to somebody, so there's going to be a little bit of that. I think that 10% helps with that. So if there is comfort level, that's what I was kind of trying to gauge too with the third option, that it's, it lays it out enough for me. I think I'm comfortable with that.
Yes, yeah, I, I think that, you know, option three, I won't hear what everybody else had to say, but I really don't have a problem with that 70/20/10 split. It gets rid of the resolution. Some of the past arguments were always about, you know, what's in effect, the law, the resolution, you know, what was passed on the ballot, so we need to get past that. 650,000 is not that much money when, when we're talking about, you know, I'm thinking about what Mark said the last meeting, when you're pushing, you know, definition for workforce housing, maybe, you know, a lot of these rental properties are not going to be rentable in the future because we built all these apartments, and those things are going to be prime candidates for people to buy and renovate, put back on the tax rolls, and we need to get a program going, and it's going to take that amount of money probably each year to actually make that happen. But we can attract, you know, first time buyers, maybe keep people that are retiring in the city instead of moving out, maybe retract some retirees. I mean, this could be a really big ingredient to economic development, you know, while we're labeling it, you know, housing, it's also a big piece of it. But I also think you've, you've got to fence off at least that 20% if we're serious about, you know, the new direction the Chamber's headed, and because we have shifted gears on how we're doing economic development. And then by clearly putting 70% in the future debt and current debt, we can lay that out, and what this tax will do is allow us to have a strategic plan. If it gets passed in November, then we can really put our nose to the grindstone and figure out the direction we're going. If it fails, well, then the strategic plan's going to have to take a totally different direction. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with going with option three, and we don't have to worry about a resolution or any of that, and I think the division of the funds is fine, and I would use approximate because we don't get hung up on some, you know, some legal issue, you know, if we end up only spending 8% on housing, that'll be okay, you know? And if we need to spend 11, that'll be okay too, when you say approximate.
I, I'll add, that 650,000 a year over 10 years, you know, that's a, that's another point that can help leverage some of the other grants, home funds type of things, things that, this gives a dedicated source to leverage against. It might not solve, you know, big chunks, but it, it gives us an opportunity, a way to get into that money that a lot of our competitors are already tapping into because they're entitlement communities, and we have that heavier leverage of that, that sales tax coming in to help with all these different revitaliz, if you got to have a robust program there with revitalization and that first time home boner program. It's a good number for us to, to use, I think, in comparison towards other cities our size.
We are new to the workforce housing term, and I'm afraid that it may mean different things to each one of us. So I think it would be helpful, despite the discussion about not having some kind of a resolution, I think it would be good for us to come, we've had to wrestle over the years with the term economic development, and what did that mean? And now we're entering this workforce housing. I would like to see the commission at least wrestle with, what do we mean by workforce housing? As we start out here, what is the, anyway, that's what I would like us to, to do. And it doesn't have to be a resolution, but it has to be something that will give us guidance as we go along, so that one big housing project doesn't just roll in the door and gobble up all the money for the next 10 years. You know, that's not what we have in mind here. We have in mind using it for some real incentives, and Erin, you spoke to trying new things. And so that is more what, the definition that I would buy into, and just want to be really clear so that we don't move on down the road and have differences about what we meant.
Well, Addusall here again. That's a solid point because, you know, we don't want to get confused on that, so I don't have a problem with us coming up with a definition of workforce housing, because it's, it, it doesn't mean to, I think, most of the people, just building low-income housing. That's not part of it at all. It, it's basically a, a plan to make it so that when businesses come in here, that people can afford to live in the city, and not have to go move out into county or into Pot County to buy a house. So we want to incentivize those to maybe redevelop, you know, some of the older buildings in town, you know, attract retirees. We need to lay that out, and part of it may be, we may have to put in place that, you know, Housing Advisory Board, and have them help us that we talked about at K-State a few months ago, and I think that may be part of it. But I think, you know, the future meeting, we could do that, define it. But I think, you know, the future meeting, we could do that, define it. And if that needs to be a resolution just on what is workforce housing, then fine, that'd be great. I don't have a problem with that.
Hattasol here again. I was just, I, we need to have that discussion at some point. I don't, I don't want to necessarily pigeonhole us into one idea that's going to lock us in for ten years when obviously these ideas will evolve and other cities will come up with great ideas and will go, great, that's, that, that's what we've been looking for. And I don't want to have us sort of committed to something that does not allow us flexibility for future commissions. And so, yeah, I, I, I would like us to kind of knock around some ideas at some point. I don't know if we have to have it by September first, I don't suspect. But by the time that money starts coming in, which, yeah, we're not even going to have workforce development money till February or March of 2023, apparently, till the first stuff gets collected. So we've got some time to come up with some ideas. So I, but I, I like, yeah, I'd like to keep some flexibility so that we can change as, as new and bright ideas come along. But we need to have some good ideas to kind of start with. But I don't want us to feel like we're limited. Okay, here's, here's two good ideas. And these are only two ideas we're going to work on over the next ten years. Because we may have six great ideas by the time fifth or sixth year rolls around. So, yeah, keep some flexibility, but let's, let's start trying to bring in the guardrails a little bit so we have an idea of what it, what it will actually mean to people.
I agree that we need to have a definition in place by the time the money starts coming in. So maybe that's part of our motion as we move to adopt this. It doesn't have to be in the, in the, in the ballot initiative, but certainly we would have some kind of collective sense of what we're talking about. That's, okay, thank you.
I think, I think we're talking about, you know, having a workforce housing, you know, plan as part of the strategic plan. Of course, I'd like to see us, you know, because we've got two years to build it, is put that Housing Advisory Board together and let them put their heads together and give us some input from the community.
There you go.
I heard a lot of different ideas from them, got several emails. And, and as Mark says, you know, all those can be included. We'll try all of them or none of them, depending upon, you know, what the situation is in 2023. And, you know, some of us may be here and some of us not at that point in time. And so whoever's here, you know, as Mark says, they got to have that flexibility to act. And I, I think the way this is falling out, it's, it's going to do that for them.
Linda, did you want to add something?
No, I just wanted to speak to, I'm leaning to, of course, to the seventy, twenty, thirty. I do have a concern about the mixing the, the debt with the infrastructure. Because either one of them could, we might not get what we think. Because our debt is growing and our infrastructure needs are always hungry for money as we try to improve the community, whether it is the airport runway that we have to have, whether it is the levy that we have to come up with the $10 million for. We just, I'd like, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm not so sure that the voters are interested in voting on something that seventy percent of it is going to be called debt. So I'd like for us to have something more that would explain better what we're talking about.
The, the interesting thing, and I, I like the way this was phrased by the staff, because in my mind, infrastructure is debt. I mean, when you think about it, the way the process works, we, we approve a project and then it shows up on the debt legislate, the, the debt sheet two years later. You know, and, and that's the problem that catches us. So that's why, in, in reality, infrastructure is future debt. And maybe that's part of the education process. Because just like, you know, the, the Douglas Center, we ended up funding that through property tax, that's eventually going to hit us in the bond and interest fund. That's future debt. We approved that, what, a year ago? So, so, so the two go hand in hand. I think this, this simplifies it a whole lot. Rather than saying, okay, you know, we got it, we're going to fence so much for infrastructure, so much for debt, the reality has always been the infrastructure is the debt because it's temp notes and it's actual bonds later. So, but, but you are right, that's got to be sold. People got to understand how it works and, and that's going to be part of the education process, I believe.
And I think it's a negative. And I really want to find some word or some, to, to translate or transmit a positive on this because it is our future here we're talking about.
Commissioner, I had a, a phone call about the same topic and the individual stressed to me how much we should be spending these dollars to improve our streets. And I said, it's, it's interesting, that's exactly what seventy percent in this scenario would do. Because when you look at Miller Parkway and West Anderson and you think about Kimball College in North Manhattan in the future, those are major streets that carry twenty, thirty thousand people a day. Hopefully, they'll appreciate that investment in those streets. But you're right, that's our challenge is to educate in a way that they realize that that's exactly what it will go.
Of course, the other thing is, is I'm looking, I was looking back at the big paragraph, which would be on the ballot, you know, for option three. If we change it to approximately, about halfway through it, it would say approximately seventy percent of the funds generated by such tax shall pay for outstanding, outstanding city debt and the cost of public infrastructure. So, so the infrastructure piece i- is part of what is in the possible ballot resolution. So I think that'll help. When people go in to vote, it'll be pretty clear that it's debt and infrastructure, when in reality, the two are intertwined. We know that. But that'll, that I think will help clarify it.
Just to wordsmith more and to, to Commissioner Morse's point, I, when I read that as well, you know, the debt, the debt is the first thing you read when you're trying to figure out what this question's for. And I don't know if, if that's a very good marketing skill there. I think maybe we put infrastructure ahead of debt in that sentence, or even trade some of the other sentences around. I, I just, if I'm in the ballot and I'm reading this and I get to a point and they're saying, you know, this is going towards debt, and I'm thinking, I'm not, I, I might check the box based on just that first word, right? So I don't want to lead with that because I do agree that it is a somewhat of a negative word for people.
Should, should we start with the ten, twenty, and then end with the seventy in the order in the question?
I think we can start with public infrastructure and because that's part of it as opposed debt first.
Yeah, we can order those. Go ahead.
Probably tax relief, too.
Linda, did you have other comments?
Just other than the, I think I was, I was going to try and address another question, another question or two of Jared, of Jason. Anyway, I, I've got stuff on workforce housing, which is the small piece instead of the big piece, which is more economic development. So just want to be sure that, well, that's debt and infrastructure. And then twenty percent is jobs. And I want to be clear about, let's see what the language says on that job. So we would continue to handle that like we do now with economic development money or meaning awarding projects or how have we said.
So currently, we use our annual agreements and annual reporting from the chamber as our economic development agent. They act on behalf of the city. They bring us options to consider. The commission, at their own discretion, approves the chamber's contract and then considers those economic development proposals. I don't, I wouldn't see that necessarily changing unless the commission wanted to see that change. But then you could have your accountability in your reporting from the chamber continue. Twice a year, they come before you and they do submit monthly reports for, for city administration and the commission and the community to digest. The piece about our current procedure that I guess I feel like is already shifted, we have a lot of policy and procedure about those large asks that come before the committee, the commission, the applications that are filled out, the, the reviews that are done financially, the two readings, the two considerations that the commission has, and really that focus of economic development funds when it comes to the model and generating a recommendation back to you all based on really capital investment that generates property taxes down the road and then jobs, but which are high paying jobs, jobs that you want to incentivize within the community. What, what the chamber has been promoting is so much more than that. It, it's about helping those startups. It's about generating the culture where people who are entrepreneurs can, can grow in our community and retain businesses and expand existing businesses and really wanting to get into that mode versus waiting for that big fish to land by an incentive package that costs the community anywhere from half a million to a million dollars. Probably going to see less of those. In the last eight years, we've only seen three applications. We funded two and one of them still exists. So I think a lot of that effort and energy wants to move towards working with some of our newcomers, our startups, our entrepreneurs, and grow their businesses, help them be successful in Manhattan. So we may have to look at our policies and procedures and alter those to match our, our goals and our plans moving forward. It wouldn't prohibit the commission from still receiving, you know, the application and the process that you've done before for Tallgrass and the, the foundation and Ultra ICE. But it, it could also expand and be what the, what the chamber's been talking to us about in, in terms of expanding job creation.
It, it's much broader than just the company coming. It involves the K-State Foundation requests for a new office building. It involves Manhattan Technical College, Area Technical College, and some of their needs. And so I want to be sure that we, I, I just, I, I want to be able to help in strategic ways and not be too, you know, I've been a kind of a holdout for retaining the economic development money for the big projects that would come. And you're right, they just haven't come. And so I, I think you're right about doing something more creative. I just want to be sure our processes allow us to do that. And that, but I also want to be a real, the whole operation, chamber, city, commission, to be a good steward of the taxpayers' money. That is so critical in my mind. We just, there's no substitute for that. So the other thing I wanted to just speak about a little bit is the quality of the jobs that we're attracting. And I want to be sure that we are not going to go down the rabbit hole again of minimum wage jobs at a call center. I want us to, to have meaningful jobs. And so that is clearly the goal that I think we have to have to, to, to encourage the public to vote for this is that we're, we're, we, well, enough, but, you know, you can call it whatever you want, but there is an amount of wage or salary that a person has to have to live these days. And we tend to deal with the businesses with the expectation that they will pay the employees what's called a living wage or a wage that, that they can get by on. And I'm not always sure that happens. So I really appreciate the, the process scrutiny that the chamber and the city get and the criteria to evaluate these proposals. And then the follow-up every year that you do in a report that shows that that company really is doing that. You know, that's, I think that's unusual. I don't want to just give the money away and hope they do it. I want us to make sure that it happens. So that, those are my comments about the economic development side. Right now, we're giving, you know, our formula for the current economic development, which is a half, which is a quarter cent, right?
One third.
It's part of the Riley County half cent sales tax. We get sixty-one percent of the proceeds.
Yeah. And, but I want to be sure that we're, we use, we broke it down into one third, one third, one third. And I'd just like to be sure that going forward, the amount of money will be about twice what we have been getting, which we've been getting about three million, we'll be getting over six million. And so six point five a year for ten years. So that is a meaningful amount. And we ought to be able to really see some, see some things happening if we are, because we're all going to be working together. So that's enough for now.
Thank you, Linda. So I'm going to add in a few comments here as well. I think, like I said, I wasn't for this and I'm, I'm still not all in as far as the sales tax. The discussion we're having tonight is because majority did approve to probably move forward. I do want to wait to get more information before we dive into all of the details. And here's why I say this. When we sell this or put it out there as a pandemic recovery, sales tax ballot initiative, we're still in the pandemic. So K-State, you know, may or may not, or may go onto online. I don't know what's going to happen. They're still deciding that piece. K-12 is going to start and we don't know what's going to happen after they start. And I think the Kansas High School Athletic Association just had their meeting. I don't know what, what that's going to look like for high school athletics. But all of that is revenue sources for us. And until August and September happened, we really don't know where all of that's going to fall. July is kind of a lull because everybody's on vacation and, you know, K-State shutting down, K-12 shutting down kind of flattened the curve for us. We had spikes here and there, but we're going to see what happens in August and September. And that's why I want to move very cautiously. Because as optimistic as we are in this discussion, there may not be enough appetite for voters to go there and vote on a sales tax. But if this is something we will move forward with, I think the chamber and some other entities might redo some polling to see what happens. And if there is enough, I guess, enough positive feedback to move forward with a sales tax for the city. I don't know what Riley County Commissioners are going to do, and I don't know what Potawatomi County Commissioners are going to do. So that's the reality of it. We're speaking for the city, but the options that are in front of us proposed by city staff, I just want to tweak it a little bit. I want to tweak it to sixty, thirty, and ten. Sixty being for debt and infrastructure, thirty being for the economic development piece and ten percent being for housing. And the reason I say the thirty for the economic development is we need to also, when we think about pandemic recovery, and if that's, that's what, what I'm thinking about this as for 2023, there's a lot of small businesses that've suffered dramatically. And when we think economic development, sometimes we think about businesses that have more than twenty, thirty, I don't know how many people we expect them to employ. But our current small businesses, we want them to also be sustaining themselves. And I want to make sure there's an option for them to go for these funds because the sales tax that people are going to be voting on are our sales tax residents in the city of Manhattan, especially our businesses. And I feel there needs to be a, a place for our small businesses that are in our community already to tap into some of those funds. And I think that is something we really need to look into. The ten percent for the housing, I think, as proposed is okay as long as we do work on a resolution piece to this. I think having a Housing Advisory Board is essential. In 2023, none of us may be here. Everybody that's on this meeting right now, we, we might all change, chamber president might change. I don't know what's going to happen. But then it needs to be clear what the outcomes are, why this is set up for the ten percent. And even for the economic development for the thirty percent, the process we have in place right now, as Commissioner Morse pointed out, I feel works well for us. I think there's a lot of checks and balances and some, you know, do really well and some may not prosper as much as we would like, but it gives that option. We are kind of landlocked between other counties. We are kind of landlocked between other counties, and we want to make sure we are also doing a regional effort in this process. But I think that also needs to be in the resolution. What does that look like? I do think it needs to be fifteen dollars minimum wage starting point, because currently, when we talk about essential workers that are working right now, some of them may have COVID-19 and may not, but they need a job and they need to continue to work. And anytime something shuts down, we're taking away their income, their health insurance might go away, they may not have daycare services. So a lot falls on these hourly workers. And I think that's that's the bare minimum that we should be looking at when we look at economic development as far as salary, especially with public funds. The sixty percent for the infrastructure and debt, I think, is reasonable. And what I don't want to think about this as is a, oh, good, now there's sixty percent, we can do more. Let's look at this as there's sixty percent, what can we do with? Maybe there are some projects we still need to wait on. This doesn't mean a green light to move forward with every project we have on the docket. We still need to slow down on some of those projects till we figure out what our revenue intake is for the end, for this year as well as next year. But this at least gives a little bit of a window to work on those obligations that we've already made instead of going into new projects. I don't want this to be a window for new projects. I want us to make sure we're taking care of what we already have in place and slow down, slow down on some of those other projects. So in my opinion, I'd like a fourth option. We'll see, you know, what the commissioners feel about that. And I do think we need a resolution piece just to be a little bit more detailed on the sixty, thirty, and ten, or the seventy, twenty, ten, whatever options commissioners go for. So that's that's my feedback.
I want to just mention, because a couple of you have talked about this living wage, minimum wage, but you might recall a couple of years ago, it might have been three years ago, we made that part of the economic development package. And what happened is we we scored businesses and they got points on their packet depending upon the wage structure. But we didn't go so far as to mandate that they had to have a fifteen dollar, you know, minimum wage, because that is going to drive away people when we came to that conclusion, because you've got various, you know, wage structures in an organization. And so we did push it towards the higher wage end of it, and I think that served us well, and that should stay in there. But, you know, as far as that economic development application, that probably, and we've got a couple of years to do it, would would need to be tweaked a little bit because, you know, when we dealt with M A T C, as Linda Morris, you know, mentioned, that really didn't fit our model real well. And so we may need to add a couple of other things in there to address, you know, local businesses, things like that. And that that's a challenge for, you know, the the chamber. They need to help us with that, with their reimagined plan to to make that basically function. But, you know, from what I'm hearing, we've got at least three commissioners that are, you know, all for option three, seventy, twenty, ten, and I think the staff should go forward with that. Maybe we have four. So that's where we need to head.
Is it, one comment, is there support? As I read this again, it feels like the the language flows better with you flip, as Jason had indicated, one and three, just so you're leading with the ten percent, the housing, two percent, our number two being the twenty percent for jobs, and then you get into the debt and infrastructure. If there's, it just, as you read the whole question, it seems to make it flow better as far as recovery and the the economic development being at front of that, but if.
I don't have a problem with that. We can, you know, you can tweak that, rearrange it. I'm good with it.
To actually turn it over to one of the marketing people beyond the technical part. I wanted to ask you, Jason, when, when the chamber and the city consider an applicant for economic development money, what are the wage thresholds that you currently use? Now, that would have been decided like seven years ago when the current economic development sales tax went on. So here we are looking three years out, and I agree with when that we need to have a reexamination of what is the most appropriate. And I can't even really recall what those numbers are other than I want to be sure that, you know, we aren't at the bottom of the barrel, so to speak.
So every year, those adjust. We go out to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and we adjust those every year based on their reflection of the labor in our market.
Okay.
So every every year, we increase those. And they usually increase, you know, a quarter to fifty cents per category. And we have about four or five categories. I can resend that to you, Commissioner, in our model, that as they give us information, we go over to the the criteria page and we fill out based on what they've submitted, each appropriate level of of wage, and we give them a score accordingly. And that usually comes out in that community fit sheet that you all receive on each company.
Good. I would just raise the question. I went along with the seventy, twenty, ten. I have really no problem with the sixty, thirty, ten. I just wondered how tied commissioners are to that seventy, twenty, ten model. So that would mean thirty, sixty, thirty, thirty percent for economic development, ten for housing, and sixty percent for debt and infrastructure. I just want to have that conversation since Yusha raised it.
I think we need a lot for economic development. I think Manhattan needs to be positioned. We just have far too many challenges. Our competitions are too many. People are leaving the city of Manhattan, and it has to do with wages. And it has to do with salary, wages, and jobs. And if if we don't put more investment into those three things, yeah, students will graduate and leave. They leave not only because they don't have a job here, even if they have a job here, it's the salary. So we need to, I think, have a comprehensive vision for what economic development looks like. And we can't just say we have K-State and N B A. If we want to get scientists here, and we want to have young people living in our community, and we want to have all of that quality of life and everything, we don't want to continue to just give tax breaks for, what is it, is it IRBs and property tax breaks and all of these? We don't want to go through that route where we're constantly giving incentive packages as opposed to saying, here's what we have, and this is the investment we're making. And it might make us, position us better when we are competing with Topeka, Wichita, and Kansas City. That's where they're all going. If you look, look on the Kansas Department of Commerce, all of, they look at sites, they look at all of these things, and we need some people to work on this, along with city staff. And yes, the chamber is also going to do their part, but this is public money. So I feel like the city has to be very intricately involved in these processes.
See, I'm pretty hard over on the seventy, twenty, you know, ten idea, simply because the twenty is twice what the chamber is getting now, and they're changing directions. So, you know, and and the giveaway plans have not worked. We've got twenty years of failure and giving away money to corporations. So so they're taking a new direction. And the seventy percent infrastructure, all infrastructure is economic development. And so, you know, that that's always going to be tied to it, like if a company needs to come in here, and just like N B A, you know, we got to redesign the roads, northwest corridor to get three hundred people in there, or an ag building, that infrastructure money is, in fact, economic development and has to be targeted towards it. So the chamber's role is to get these businesses in here, you know, have a little bit of a carrot with that twenty percent. But if there's some big thing that has to be done, a water line put in, a street put in, something of that nature, that falls under the infrastructure part, and and that complements it. So I think I think this makes it very simple. I think the seventy, twenty, ten is the way to go, one hundred percent.
Well, I do want to make clear, when I say thirty or twenty percent, whatever we say economic development, I don't mean this is going to be just given to the chamber. I I want to get rid of that myth that we're giving away this money to the chamber. And that is something we face constantly, that we're just giving it to the chamber. That's why the city has to be involved, because this is public funds. This is taxpayer money. And the commissioners, we've been involved in the past, and we need to continue to be involved. I've talked with small businesses in Aggieville and in downtown, and they'll say, how come you have all of this money for the corporations and not for small businesses? And that's why I'm leaning towards the thirty percent. There needs to be an outlet for our our small businesses. I don't mean just the incubator ones. I don't mean just startups. I mean, like our restaurants and our retail, some of the ones that are suffering the most right now, if we're going to put it also under the umbrella of pandemic recovery. So that that's that, and and when I'm glad you brought that up. I don't want this to be like, here's what the chamber is getting. That that is not the way this should be thought of. And that's not the way I envisioned the way we did our economic development projects either that were coming to us. I mean, we had lots of discussion on several of those.
Yeah, but we've got oversight on that. But in reality, you know, the reason you're you're putting the twenty percent there is the the chamber is acting as an extension of the city staff because they got a contract, and that's where a part of that goes. And then the other advantage to that is that businesses really don't want to deal with the commission, because what happens? It's all public knowledge, and there's information there that they don't want out on the street. So the chamber really provides some some real advantages, you know, on that on that side of it. But ultimately, when they finish the work and then that economic development packet comes to us, you know, we end up saying yes or no. So we've got the oversight. It never was, you know, money that the chamber could just spend any way they wanted. There's some real strings attached. And so I just think with the increase in this, twenty percent's a lot. That's that's a lot. And when when you look at how we've spent it over the past ten years, we we put the majority of it into infrastructure just because the, you know, the businesses weren't there. And I do agree that the chamber, and as part of their shift, it is moving towards smaller businesses. And a lot of the small businesses in town just never filled out an application. Nothing ever prevented them from doing that. And I've had discussions with the with the business districts, DMI, and, you know, Aggieville about that, and they can put in the applications. And if they do, you know, we have the opportunity to give them priorities for sure over some out of town group. And I'd be the first one to do that, you know, got to support the people that are here.
I have a quick question about the infrastructure. Jason, that, let's, for example, quality life projects being something that creates jobs, people say they like, they want to live here, quality life issues, parks, not just parks and rec, but the bike ped systems plan, some of the implementation of that, would that fall under this umbrella of infrastructure, that seventy percent then?
Anything we can issue debt for would absolutely qualify for that seventy percent if that's the percentage we go for. You know, when we think about making Manhattan more attractive, there are a number of related projects that we could pursue and issue debt and use these revenues for. There are opportunities downtown, there are opportunities all throughout the community for us to look at how we can improve the either the existing infrastructure or add additional infrastructure. And that could be debt serviced with this revenue stream. The twenty percent for jobs, you know, I think some of your comments fall in line with my level of thinking in terms of where money could be carved off to incentivize. And we talked about the young upstarts, that we talked about the entrepreneurs, we talked about those those, getting those people to stay in Manhattan and not lose that talent. That's an effort that is going to change a lot, and that culture has to be built in Manhattan. I would just point out, over the last twenty years, there's been advocates out there for a third of the revenue. And Commissioner Morris pointed out, it's three million a year. If a third of that could be dedicated to jobs, they, a lot of people would have been pretty happy, and that would have been a million a year. And at twenty percent under this scheme, it's one point three million a year. I've had feedback that 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 is appropriate, and they're they're satisfied with that amount. It doesn't mean they wouldn't be satisfied with two million if they were thirty percent, don't get me wrong. But the reactions at one point three million and twenty percent have been favorable, knowing we have capacity, if we need it, under the the debt piece to actually insert ourselves and make a project attractive.
And I guess to follow up with the entrepreneur type of economic development, some of that, that it it's possible for sure, like the mayor just outlined, that a portion of this, the fiscal agent or kind of the oversees the plan as it was written in one of the agendas for economic development initiatives, would certainly be the chamber. But there could also be additional agents to carry out different entrepreneurial activities, different minority on business might be something, you know, I'm just thinking out loud here, but that doesn't, there's no reason it has to be one, obviously. It can be multiple. You know, I, for me, for the other commissioners, I I'm not somebody that has to be, the housing was important to me, ten percent. I if I have to decide between seventy and sixty, I'm going to say sixty five. And you guys, you've you pulled the other twenty, twenty five, sixty five, and let's make a deal here. But I I do, I see value in what the mayor is talking about, in that having that flexibility and what even I just heard from Commissioner Butler, having that flexibility to make some of these small bets in different places, doing something different, because we know what we've done in the past hasn't been that fruitful, and giving that, you know, a little bit of leverage because we don't know where, what things are going to look like in 2023 necessarily, but we want to have those tools in place. So that's, that's, I'm, I'm not hard on seventy. I am hard on ten.
Well, I'll have to saw here, I'll just, I'd like to stick with the seventy, twenty, ten because of the fact that if anything's going to be a big expense for us, it would fall under the infrastructure part. And I would think the one point three million a year, thirteen million over ten, ought to be enough for the incentivization of of smaller entrepreneurial type of things easily. And if there ends up being, we have to develop some office park or another business district of some kind, and that would surely fall under the infrastructure slash debt category. And I like the infrastructure term better than debt, obviously, too, here. But the the thing is, Mayor, if 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 businesses are struggling now, they got to have some of this spark money or this money now. If any company is, business is struggling now with COVID stuff, they're going to be long out of business by the time 2023 money rolls around. And so the only hope for helping businesses now is what's left of our five hundred thousand dollars of economic development grant through the chamber or sparks or state money through the county. And the sooner we can figure that part of it out, the sooner we can help the businesses that are struggling now and will continue to struggle. We we got the email this week that, yeah, if if Fort Riley doesn't turn their soldiers loose on Aggieville pretty quick, and if the enrollment's down low, then the Aggieville area is really going to be in in a bad shape here. So there's, you know, there's got to be some stuff far sooner than in 2023, or or the businesses will be decimated if there's not some other help coming sooner than this vote on this sales tax.
No, I agree with you, Commissioner Haddasal. And because this is also, we're putting it under the umbrella pandemic recovery, is what I was trying to see. I just think if we are, especially like a living wage of fifteen dollars, twenty twenty three is really not that far off, and there have been predictions that this pandemic, we will see repercussions until 2023, even beyond that. And that's why I was thinking, trying to think long term. We can't just have it with the today's mindset. And 2023 is going to look very different. Next year is going to look very different. This fall is going to look very different. So just trying to gauge all of that. Personally, I'm not even for having this on the sales tax on on the November ballot. I just, I just think it's a very inappropriate time. But because we are pursuing this 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 particular discussion, I believe as far as economic development is concerned, our challenges are going to be huge when we are competing with Wichita, Topeka, Kansas City, and all of Lawrence, all of them. If we don't have enough money in the bank for some of that, we're we're still going to be holding the short stick, so.
So Yusha, can you support, are you going to support the ballot initiative? My question is, are you agreeable to the sixty five, twenty five, ten?
I I'd like to see the seventy, thirty, ten. I I may end up voting no, but that doesn't mean I'm going to work against a sales tax ballot. Once this commission says they agree, I will work through the details of the resolution. Once this commission says they agree, I will work through the details of the resolution. I think that's extremely important. I'm not stuck to 70, 30, 10, but I, you know, whether it's, I don't know whatever.
That would be 110.
I'm sorry. I wish there was more, but I'm just thinking today's value of a dollar is not, it's going to be very different in 2023. And I understand putting it onto infrastructure, too. I understand the building materials and labor, how costly that is. I, I get that. But I also think we need to slow down on some of these projects we have on docket. We can't pretend like, let's use this money for this. And also this property tax, when we talk about property tax, whether we increase property tax or not for any of these projects, property valuations will go up. And we will be blamed as that's on us because property valuations go up. So there's a difference between property valuations going up on their own and property taxes and mill levies and all of these things. So it's much more complex and I'm not sure one question would answer all of that. But as far as the question tonight and for this discussion, I prefer the 60, 30, 10. I may, and you know, say no to what we are discussing, but should the commission move forward, I would like to work on the resolution piece of it and move forward with whatever the decision the other four commissioners want to pursue.
See, what, what's important for me is that we give the staff some definitive guidance so they're not mucking around with three or four options next time. So we need to nail down, you know, because there's, there's two of us that are going for 70, 20, 10. And I'm not sure where Commissioner Morris and Commissioner Estabrook is on it. And I know what the mayor wants and will probably vote against the whole thing, and that's fine, too. But we need to at least get three people to provide direction so that the legal department and Jason aren't overworked coming up with five, six, seven options.
If you do need a week to think about the percentages, that's fine. I think we've got good feedback everywhere else. We could actually clean the question up, reorder it, get it approximate in there. And then next Tuesday, we can talk about percentages. If you want to nail it down tonight, that's fine, too. But just that it's not, we've got a couple of meetings here to kick it around. So if you want to think about 60, 30, 10, 65, 25, 10, 70, 20, 10, that, that's fine. But you're right, I mean, by next Tuesday, we're, we're going to need to know so we can get it out there and, and get something put together for you to vote on the 18th.
Thanks a lot, Jason. I think that's very helpful. The other piece is, do you also, are you also going to present the, the other second part for a resolution to kind of work out the kinks of it? Or is that not necessary when we look at the ballot question itself?
When we talk about it internally, if we have the percentages associated with the categories, we can avoid the resolution because a lot of the past resolutions have just been how you're going to distribute those funds. So we created the percentages in the resolution in the past. If we haven't been the question, we wouldn't necessarily have to do that. We could continue to have discussions, as you all pointed out earlier, which I applaud because we do need a couple of years here before we get to 2023 to fully define these things and how they'll roll out for the next 10 years. But with percentages and categories, you at least educate the voter enough to know what it is they're voting on.
Okay, that makes sense. I, I do think we need to define it a little bit more clearly because none of us may or may not be here.
I guess, I guess I don't remember what the resolution, I wasn't around when the resolution passed seven years ago. But were, were there, was there any other purpose to the resolution other than establishing the percentages?
Mainly the distribution of funds. And there, there were paragraphs that went ahead and attempted to describe what economic development, infrastructure and debt would be.
We may need to call upon that. Okay, thank you.
I think it was a really good discussion tonight. I, I think it's good to continue it next week and not be pressured to make a decision tonight. You know, the community heard this discussion and will also probably get feedback. And now listening to all the other commissioners, we can also go back and see, you know, what other communities are doing and what's working. And also if there's a poll being done, we can see what, if there is an appetite in the community to do something with the sales tax in November, so.
Appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to our next discussion item this evening, and that is the 2021 city budget with a focus on water, wastewater and stormwater funds. And there's three different items here. I don't know if, I'm sure Rob Ott's probably involved in all of them. So I will leave it to Rob, Randy Dewitt and Brian Johnson to figure out who's going first.
Good evening, Mayor. Rob Ott, Director of Public Works. So I'm going to go ahead and try and kick it off here. You know, tonight, we're not setting rates or anything, just like the discussion you just finished. You know, traditionally, the water, wastewater and stormwater rates are set either late November or December so that they take effect for the next year, for, for January 1st of 2021. If I remember right, we have to amend Chapter 31 of our Code of Ordinances and make whatever changes we decide here in the future. So just like this discussion tonight, you know, if it does make it to the ballot, and then you do have a vote and some election results, it may change what we're presenting tonight. But tonight, we're trying to present to you all the knowledge and facts that we do have before us and the direction that we've been given for the last couple of months. Thank you for introducing Randy Dewitt, Assistant Director of Public Works for Utilities, as well as the city engineer, Brian Johnson is on tonight and he'll talk about the stormwater. I'm going to kick it off talking about the levy project, which affects all three project, or all three utility funds. Just a re, a quick recap on the levy project, which frankly really began in the middle of the 1993 flood. When the levy failed to perform, as it was anticipated it should have performed in 93 in the first and only release of floodwaters through the spill gates, it underperformed and did not meet expectations of the Corps of Engineers nor the community. There's a number of different components. This map is, is difficult to see, but I do have a more detailed PDF here that I, I've zoomed in a little bit. And just very quickly, the project does begin up at Hayes Encasement and follows along the Big Blue system to the confluence of the Big Blue and the Kansas River, and then continues on along the Kansas River all the way to basically 17th Street. The project includes a number of different components of everything from raising the actual levy, so increasing the height, as well as removing, upgrade a number of the gate wells that were constructed in the 1960s, relief wells, which help the geotech components of the inner components of the levy, additional stability berms and underseepage berms. So it is a significant project that's been underway for quite some time. So hopefully you can see my PowerPoint. You know, there's, here's kind of all the different details. What I, what I want to focus on is the schedule here, which is basically the design will be completed late summer. And we're currently in the process of right away an easement acquisition. We have agents that are working on our behalf, consultants assisting us with that task. And you'll begin to see some of those things in March. And the advertisement to bid this project, which will be by the Corps of Engineers, is set in May and the award in July. I believe we have to provide a check to United States Army Corps of Engineers 90 days prior to that July 9th. And that's kind of what we're going to talk about this evening, or my initial slides of the impact to the three funds. So over the past few months, some betterments have been approved. As Commissioner Morris mentioned initially, the base project is roughly, our share is 35% at 10 million. Just a few weeks ago, we did have a discussion about some of the betterments. And Commissioner Morris, I appreciated your, you, your, your pushing and prodding of me to go after some grants for some of the ramps and stuff. I, I'm happy to report that I, I did visit with Stephanie Peterson from the MPO, and she gave us a good lead. And I know Eddie's not on tonight, but Wyatt Thompson of Park and Rec is kind of preparing and pursuing some grants that are reimbursement for those, those ramps and so forth. So we are trying to seek additional dollars to try and reduce that, that overall impact. So obviously, a number of different things that have been approved. That doesn't mean they've been awarded. There will be a time and period, the last time we talked about the, the biggest bogey that was new was this number three, which was the riprap upon the levy. We talked about perhaps not awarding that if we weren't happy with the price when those bids come in. But obviously, the, the base project as well as betterments one and two definitely should be awarded and so forth. So I'm going to keep going here. So when you look at what is it that we actually need to adjust in the rate structure and in, in order to afford this project? And betterments one and two were already programmed into the forecast sheet. So you can really subtract that off of the overall total cost of the project in terms of rate structure. We, we still have to pay for them. I just, when, when Brian gets into his presentation or, or some numbers I'm going to present here in a few minutes, those two projects have already been accounted for in the forecast. So the increase is not, is not necessarily for betterments one and two, they were already planned for. The other item is, is the utility relocation. So unfortunately, the Corps of Engineers used, loves to use this word, credits. And we have an obligation of this 10 million of, or 35% of that overall project share. We do get to use this 2 million as well towards that 10.3. That doesn't mean we're going to reduce our 10.3 million down by 2 million. It just means that we're still going to spend the 10.3. We just don't have to pay for it, I guess, twice. It gets to count towards the credit, I'm sorry, I said 10.3, 10.5. So when you take all these different credits, when you take the betterments one and two that were already accounted for in the forecast, basically, you take the total project cost from the previous page minus betterments one and two, as well as the learn, the credits and the 2 million, basically what we're looking at is 14 million that we have to finance. So what changes do we need to make to the stormwater fee, the water and the wastewater fund in order to generate our, our payment? So the annual debt payment is roughly 1.1 million. And several months ago, after the commission learned that the November 2019 ballot initiative for sales tax failed, the direction given from the commission to staff was to fund the project through stormwater as a 70, 15, 15. So basically 70% to stormwater and then both water and wastewater each have that 15% or roughly 166,000. So what we did as staff is looking at the forecast, out projects, what increases are needed just to fund the levy project. I mentioned that the project will be bid in 2021. If we, so the analysis that we have here tonight, this 1.6 ERUs, and I'll remind you, ERUs are equivalent residential unit. It's roughly around 3,000 square feet. So each single family has one ERU. And then if you're a commercial, like any, any commercial business and you have 20 ERUs, obviously you're going to pay 20 times where that ERU rate is. And Brian will go into the different individual rates here in a little bit. In order to generate, to make these payments part of each fund, we're looking at an additional $1.66 per ERU in the stormwater fund, as well as a 3% increase in the water fund and the wastewater fund. Now, obviously, if you make that one-time increase, we believe that we will have enough money in each of the out years to make that debt payment. Obviously, if you delay when you do those increases, that reduces the amount of cash you might have to buy down the project before it's permanently bonded. I guess the best analogy I can give you, no different than when any of us go to purchase a new or, or a used new car, we have a certain debt payment that we have in mind, a monthly payment that we want to make. And sometimes we put X amount of dollars down to help reduce what that monthly payment is. Obviously, the more cash that we build up during the temp note phase and then pay before we permanently finance it with the bonding, especially in a project of 14 million at this magnitude over 20 years, you know, that interest cost could be as much as, I don't know, 200,000 to a quarter of a million more or less a year. So again, our analysis tonight is really starting in 2021. But if the commission, again, within your purview, if you want to delay that or, or whatever, we can, we'll, we'll go back and take a look at some of those scenarios. So that's, that's basically my portion for starting out tonight's discussion on the three funds. We know we have this debt that is coming. We know we have a payment that will have to be made in the spring of 2021. And they affect, it affects all three funds. And the forecasts and the charts that you're going to see tonight from Randy and Brian, you know, show the different scenarios of, of those increases in there. So with that, commissioners, I'm going to pause here and see if you have any questions on the levy project or perhaps the analysis that we did here. If not, Mayor, I'll, I'll let Randy Dewitt begin presenting the water and wastewater in more detail.
Thanks a lot, Rob. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Rob?
Yes, I do. Yusha, Linda Morris. Rob, is the, so the 3% increase in water and 3% for wastewater does not include any other operations. It's just, it is just this levy project. So we're not going to be increasing those other fees for anything else for beginning 2021 or 2022. I don't know how long. Because I know you have a, I've seen a chart where you predict what the increases would be as time goes by in order to fund the new wells we have to drill and the, the, the next installment out of the wastewater treatment plant or, so talk a little bit about that.
No, actually, I think, I think you have a good grasp and a good cut.
Maybe that's nasty.
No, I, I, I think you have a good, and that's the reason why I started off, is that this is really, what, what I just presented is really the base just for the levy.
For levy.
This is not increases for future capital improvement projects, such as, as you mentioned, the, the new well field or purchasing of land or any water lines or any sewer, relief sewers.
Right.
This is just for the levy. And it's not for additional capital improvements, it's not for additional anticipated operating costs or anything of that nature. So I think you summarized it well. It is truly just for the levy. And that's why I'm, I'm sure we'll see where the discussion goes tonight.
Okay. So Rob, you, you referenced last year's sales tax ballot. If that had passed, would we not need to do this?
I, I'll, I'll let Jason help me. Hopefully my answer is correct, which is, I believe we had, right around 10 million was plugged into the overall education and the number of different projects. As I mentioned, the betterments one and two were already programmed into the forecast. The biggest bogey honestly is this, this replacement of riprap. It came in much higher than we had anticipated. So to answer your question, Mayor, I would say that it would have significantly reduced the amount of, of impact in terms of rate increase for the project. I don't know, Jason, if I summarized that.
Yeah, when we were educating for the 0.3, the 10 million, our 35% share was what we were educating with.
Yeah, I remember the levy was going to be our draw because the dust coming away from the, all the impacts from flood and flood infrastructure. because the dust coming away from the, all the impacts from flood and flood infrastructure and all of these conversations we were having. But I remember that was one of our um key priorities because we already had the federal funding for it and we needed to take care of our ten million dollar portion of it. Okay.
So Jason, I have a cell here. So the, so going back to our to our sales frac, sales tax presentation from twenty minutes ago, um none of that infrastructure debt payments would would have to go to the levy then? If if we're gonna pay for it out of stormwater, water and wastewater? Okay.
That's correct. You you have the flexibility in the future. If if the tax would pass, you could take all of all of the debt service, a portion of the debt service. What we're gonna have to do is create really an accounting for you all, you know, based on the percentage you you isolate for debt and public infrastructure and then show you on an annual and a ten-year basis just what we're gonna be able to to pay for out of that. Um you know, it, just sitting here contemplating your your scenarios of of the sixty, sixty-five and seventy, every ten percent is over six hundred thousand dollars annually, which is a mill in the bond and interest fund. So every time you move that percentage around by five percent, it's three hundred and somewhat thousand. By a full ten percent, it's six hundred and fifty thousand. So when you, when you move that money around, it will impact then your bond and interest mill levy support as well.
Okay, thanks.
I think it's important to mention also that this levy is something that we have to get on with. And we can't wait for money to start coming in in twenty twenty-three. This is uh here, we've been waiting ten years, I think. When I was elected in twenty sixteen, we were afraid it was coming that year or the next year. So we've been on edge and now it's arrived, so we have to deal with it.
Yeah, it is a one true obligation. Okay, if there are no more questions for Rob, we'll move on. Um is Randy Dewitt next?
Go ahead, Randy.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh can you see my presentation now? Okay, uh so I appreciate the opportunity to be here to give you guys an update on on the utilities. Uh as usual, before we start talking about uh twenty twenty-one, I wanna give you a little background on uh a recap of twenty nineteen and and twenty twenty year-to-date. So starting on the water side, just a kind of reminder, twenty nineteen was a was a bad year for us in terms of of water revenues. Uh we were about one point five million dollars short uh on our revenues compared to what we had budgeted, uh primarily due to uh of course, being one of the wettest years on record. Uh we were down about fifteen percent in terms of consumption from twenty eighteen. Uh almost twelve percent down from our our ten-year average as far as water consumption. Um I went back and did a little bit of research. It was also our lowest consumption year since about two thousand one, so almost twenty years. Uh so it was a definitely an interesting year to to manage the water fund uh that had traditionally been pretty stable. Uh on the good thing, it good side is that we were able to achieve almost six hundred thousand dollars in in operational savings. Uh most of that came from savings from our utility bills and our chemical bills at the water plant. Uh another portions of it came from some projects that we saved on and uh just general ops and maintenance budget, so. Uh so twenty twenty started with uh um about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars less as far as cash reserves uh in the water fund. Uh we we ended with a twenty nineteen uh fund balance of about seven point six one million. Uh we had a budget uh of seven point eight five million. So we were about two hundred and forty mil, sorry, two hundred and forty thousand dollars short uh in twenty nineteen. Uh so looking at twenty twenty, uh I've got three bullet points here that are kind of year-to-date benchmarks that I've been looking at uh to try to compare our consumption for twenty twenty and our revenues and sales uh against last year and also against our ten-year mean. Uh you know, we we use that ten-year running average as a important uh number to help us when we're developing the budget for, you know, next year and the out years. Uh so uh the first bullet point, we really looked at January through May because we wanted to see potentially how we were impacted by COVID nineteen and and some of the the closures and K-State shutting down and students leaving. Uh so uh it was, it was actually pretty, a pretty big impact for us. Uh compared to twenty nineteen through May, uh we had sold uh thirty-one thousand less units and it had about a seventy-five thousand dollar impact to our revenues. Uh comparing that to our ten-year running average, we were actually short by about eighty thousand units in sales. That's almost two hundred thousand dollars in revenue. Um the next bullet point would be uh, you know, the year-to-date through June this year. And uh since that was the time when we were opening things back up and people were getting to go back to work, uh we almost caught up to twenty nineteen, uh which isn't saying much, obviously, since that was a pretty poor year for revenues. But uh we were only eight thousand units uh short, less than twenty nineteen at that point, about twenty thousand dollars short. Uh but unfortunately, when you, when you look at that uh time period against the ten-year running average, we were still almost a hundred and ten thousand units uh sold less, uh which, as you can see there, that's about a two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar shortfall when comparing our our ten-year running average of of sales. Uh and then you're really looking at year-to-date through July. Um we don't have a full billing cycle through July yet. Uh actually, our last billing cycle should post tomorrow. Uh but I've tried to do my best to project uh where we're gonna be at year-to-date for July. And it's a little bit better story as far as looking, looking and comparing to last year. We're, we've caught back up, we're now ahead of last year's pace. Uh we sold about eighty thousand units of water more, uh at about a hu- uh two hundred thousand dollars uh more in revenue than last year. But unfortunately, you go back to that ten-year running average and and we're still almost a hundred and five thousand units short, uh which which is uh almost two hundred and sixty thousand dollars less in revenue than where we should be if this was an average year. Um I wanted to show you a graph that I used to kind of keep an eye on our sales uh throughout the year uh versus uh your ten-year running average in some some years past. Uh and it really just tells the story graphically what I just told you. And I'm gonna look here at July again. It just kind of goes show, the blue line, the blue bar here represents uh twenty twenty. Uh the black bar is our ten-year running average and yellow is is obviously twenty nineteen. As you can see, we're we're above last year, which is great, but we still have a pretty good gap uh to cover in order to make sure we're at our our uh average revenue, our average sales again, which which really is, you know, gives us an idea where we're gonna be at in terms of meeting our projected or budgeted revenues for this year. Um and the bottom line here is, you know, we can, we can be average for the rest of the year and and we're still gonna be uh several hundred thousand dollars short in revenues. Um you know, we've had, obviously, uh there's a, there's a little bit of lag in this data. Uh some of the data that we see for July is actually for for consumption that happened in June. And, you know, July and August and September are our biggest uh months in terms of sales, obviously, uh due to irrigation. And so we, there's still a pretty good chance that we can make up those those um revenue shortfalls. Uh the good thing is, it's just, it's, it doesn't look like we're gonna have near as bad as last year. Um and it hasn't been a couple rainy weeks. Who knows what August holds? But I'm optimistic that uh we can, we can get close to that budgeted amount. Uh the other thing I wanted to talk about was where we're at on expenditures. Um you know, the good thing is, you, if I, if I'm, I'm optimistic that if we we make our revenues, that's great. Uh but I've got, you know, up to about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in potential savings that I'm I'm looking at if if we have to uh find savings for the last half of the year. Most of these are comprised of um s- lower priority uh maintenance and capital improvement projects, uh some operational budget savings, uh but most of these come from uh water line replacement projects that are uh small uh cash payment projects. But uh what we typically do is, let's say we got four projects this year that we're working on. We we combine those, we design them as one project, uh we construct them as one project, and then we'll, we'll finance them through a, through a temp note. So we'll be able to spread those costs around and then won't be a cash uh impact to the twenty twenty budget. Um so that's things that we can do to kind of help us out to defray any potential revenue shortfalls this year. Uh so transitioning over onto the wastewater side, uh looking back at twenty nineteen, of course, uh we had about a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall. And primarily reasons for that are, are we've talked in the past about a a trend where uh sewer consumption is going down. Uh the winter quarter average has gone down anywhere from two to three percent on average for, since about two thousand twelve. Uh so last year, we saw a decrease in consumption uh from twenty eighteen of about two percent. Uh you know, we, on the good side, we did manage to find about uh almost over nine hundred thousand dollars in budget savings last year uh through um some some project cuts and and just general uh ops and maintenance budget savings. We uh we ended up at a uh fund balance level of one point nine million dollars at the end of twenty nineteen. Budgeted was one point five, so we did come out ahead uh in terms of where we anticipated we would be. Uh but overall, you can see the difference from twenty eighteen. We lost about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the cash balance last year uh and compared to to twenty eighteen. So um some good, some bad to tell. Uh as far as sales and consumptions and updates for twenty twenty, um one really good thing that uh we had happen this year is we did actually uh see an end to that trend, the sales going down. Uh the winter quarter average for twenty twenty actually increased by about two percent from four point eight units to four point nine units. Uh so that's a good thing to see. Uh that should help uh ensure that we meet our revenue projections for this year. That's also pretty apparent that some of the corrective rate increases that we did last year are gonna have a positive effect. So overall, I think we're in a good position to uh meet our revenue projections for twenty twenty. On the expenditure side of things, uh just because we knew that there's some uncertainty uh this year, uh we didn't know what revenues were gonna look like earlier this year. Uh we made a decision to not move forward with a couple of our annual sewer maintenance projects. Uh it's uh the the cure-in-place uh relining uh projects that we do every year for sewer rehabilitation. Uh that saved us about half a million dollars for this year. Uh at this time, we're not planning on doing that this year. Uh but we will certainly uh continue with that next year. Uh any questions on that recap of twenty nineteen and twenty twenty before I go on to twenty nineteen?
Any questions?
Okay.
Doesn't look like it.
All right, good. Uh so looking forward to the twenty twenty-one uh water budget. Uh generally, uh there's no major increases to our ops and maintenance budget. Uh personnel, uh I'm gonna talk about a couple of personnel requests there in a minute. Uh some some slight increases to, you know, uh health insurance and and various line items. But obviously, with no COLA or merit increase, uh really, you're left with just promotions and and new personnel. Uh everything else, we tried to hold flat. Um I went through and I I looked at our forecasts and as far as forecasted uh capital expenditures and debt service payments, we should have a uh three hundred and fifty thousand dollar decrease in twenty-one compared to twenty. Um that's my um stab at doing some math from our forecasts. Uh general fund transfer, of course, uh we've talked about increasing that one time uh for twenty twenty-one on the water side by four hundred and sixty-six thousand uh to to help out some of the potential shortfalls or the anticipated budget shortfalls for um general fund uh due to COVID. So uh the the water fund portion uh is is a little bit higher just because we have a little bit healthier fund balance. So uh talking about some of the personnel requests in the memo I provided, I only had one request on the water side. Um what I'm showing you here is kind of some new information that that I found out about this week was that there was a electrician that was proposed by the Parks and Rec and the general fund. And uh that got switched over to be partially funded by the utilities initially. Um and hopefully, in the future, that would, that would transition back into uh the general fund. But that helps us out uh in the coming years because uh we currently have three electricians on staff. Uh they currently spend about, you know, half of their time uh working on utilities projects and and a good portion of time working on uh uh general fund division uh work. Uh they're all funded through the utilities. So uh generally, that position will help uh help our three electricians focus on utility work orders and help out parks by having a park, well, parks in, you know, airport and everybody else by having an electrician that can be uh for the most part dedicated to them. Uh but the other, other personnel request that we have is a water meter service worker. Uh the budget impact of that is about forty thousand or forty-two thousand dollars annually. Um a little back history on on the meter services. We used to have four full-time staff members and now we have two. Uh we have about two and a half, actually. Uh we had a large infrastructure project uh to replace about eight thousand meters about four or five years ago, uh funded through a KDAT loan. Uh essentially brought all of our system up to automated meter reading. Only have a handful of uh hand-read meters out there in system. Uh so because of that, uh we we shrunk that staff from four to two. Uh we're starting to find out that, yeah, we don't need four, but two's probably not enough. Uh we do have another staff member that kind of splits time between meter services and utility locates. Uh this would essentially give us a third full-time meter service worker. And I kind of demonstrated in my memo, there is a capital improvement project for twenty twenty-one where if we use this new uh worker to to do the installs of these, uh we've got about two thousand more meters we have to replace uh the cost of of using a contractor to do that would be um easily a hundred thousand, maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh and having this employee be able to do those installs over a two- to three-year period uh should be a substantial savings for us. On the water side, we have a very uh intense capital improvement plan in the next six years. A lot of uh large projects. Uh I don't even list the levy project at here or uh some of the utility relocates that are gonna be associated with that, like Rob mentioned. Uh not all of these are gonna be uh done in twenty twenty-one, but a lot of them, we've started on design or are just getting ready to start on design. Uh but just wanted to demonstrate um some of the, some of the big projects we have that are planned. Um and we also have some unplanned projects that aren't in the CIP that have come up uh uh through uh impacts from other projects. Uh I list the North TCB Drainage Channel Stormwater Improvements Project. Uh as a result of that, we've had some impacts to our lime sludge lagoons uh to where uh KDHT is actually, for the most part, mandating that we make improvements, enough improvements to our lagoons uh so that they are no longer a discharging lagoon. Um we were told uh when we were going to modify the lagoon because uh the stormwater project is going to widen the drainage channel and take away uh some of our storage lagoons. Uh KDHT told us that that the discharge is actually unpermitted. Uh we've been doing it for forty years and and really just now it's come to our attention that what we're doing is is uh not not preferred. Uh so we have to make investments in our lagoons to line them. We also have to have a collection system. Uh what we're collecting is the supernatant that uh comes off the top of the lime sludge as as the lime sludge dries and settles, supernatant forms on top and we have to drain that off. Uh right now, it goes to the environment through the drainage channel. In the future, it'll have to go to the sanitary sewer. Uh and then we'll have a pump station that would, that pump it to the sewer and it would be treated at the wastewater plant. So that's a significant unplanned project that we have in the water forecast now. And we also have uh almost one and a half million dollars in sewer re- or water and sewer relocations that we have to do to accommodate the stormwater project. And uh these are somewhat related to the levy as well because they, the the downstream end of the drainage channel uh is is one of the betterments uh at the the gate well structure at Hayes and Casement. Uh so these are projects that we have to do. Uh I did get some good news today and that we were approved uh preliminarily to uh include the lime sludge lagoon improvements in the uh twenty twenty-one intended use plan for KDHT. And so we'll do an. And so we'll do an official application later this year to have that be eligible for a low interest KDT loan. And I'm even hopeful that maybe we can get some principal forgiveness, things work in our favor. So large, large projects in the water fund have a big impact on the out use to our fund balance. Like I said, this doesn't even include the levy project. So I can get into more details on these individual projects if you'd like. I did, I tried to give you a pretty good description in the memo packet. But we can talk about these at the end if you have questions. So the water fund balance chart, just to start off, this is a showing projected 3% rate increase for 2021. We've talked many times in the past about how after we completed our rate structure changes a couple of years ago and phased those in. The forecast for the water and the wastewater fund all include annual increases of 3% in the out years. The this particular version, it's it's starting to become apparent that after 2025, we have a a large amount of of debt projects, those large projects that I showed you, including the levy project that are forcing that recommended fund balance level in red higher and are projected fund balance lower. We can see the impacts in 2019, 2020 of having those revenue shortfalls. Here after 2021, between 2021 and 22, you can kind of see the impact of that large general fund transfer that we're going to likely do or that is being proposed. And so you're starting to see the impact of some of these larger projects. In the past, I've only shown out to 2025 because we're we're getting 2020 now. We started moving those projections out to show you what it looks like up to 2030. So like Rob said, we have a 3% increase built into our projections every year just for the water fund. We're looking at a a potential 3% increase as a one time called levy surcharge. As Rob mentioned, we can do that this year. We can do that next year whenever the commission decides that that's that's good for us. But for the data that I'm going to show you after this, it's assuming that that happens in 2021. So that would be a total of a 6% increase. And so here's that same fund balance chart, but now I'm showing what that 6% what the out years looks like on our projected fund balance if we impose that 6% increase in 2021. And every every year after that is still the standard 3% rate increase. Also have just a couple hypothetical ones to show you. The first one being just if we decided to to make a rate increase that would help us to ensure that we're making that recommended fund balance, that represents a 10% increase in 2021. By no means are we recommending that. I'm just kind of trying to 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 show, paint the picture of of what what it would take to to meet those recommended levels. And then the last chart here is if we decided not to do a rate increase next year. And those impacts, what it looks like in the out years, and it has a pretty dramatic impact. Just if we miss those those rate increases by one year, it shows how sensitive the the water fund balances is and how much we rely on that extra $200,000 to $300,000 in revenues a year that 3% increase could potentially generate.
Randy, I have a question. Randy, this is this Linda Morris. I have a question.
Yes.
It seems like only two years ago, and you may remind me that it's been longer, that we had a consultant come and work with us or you all on the water rate structures for the future so that we would not be having deficits. And this picture looks a lot like the picture that he came to correct. For sure, lack of just able to describe it some other way. Tell me what I'm missing from this picture.
Well, really, that was a 10-year modeling effort that ended in 2025. And so when we completed that 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 modeling and one of the things that we did that was to to phase those in over a three-year period. The goal was was to have about eight to nine million dollars in the in the fund balance by 2025. Lots changed since we implemented those. You know, we, the rate structure change that we did, you know, I I detailed, well, I provided it in an enclosure, the the cost of serve method. You know, one of the things we tried to do was push more of our generation of revenues to the minimum charge and the the meter surcharge. And we actually lowered the unit rate, I believe, when we made those rate structure changes. And what that did was it it helped to ensure that every month, regardless of, you know, whether it was a rainy month or a dry month, you know, we would capture more of those revenues from the minimum charges and and less from the unit charges. But like I mentioned before, last year was the worst year we've had in in 10 years. So it it, or sorry, almost 20 years, something that the models or that consultant never could have accounted for. And I think the out years, it's really starting to show the impact of some of the projects that we've added to the six-year CIP. I mentioned some of these projects were unplanned for at least about $5 million worth of projects in the next couple of years were completely unplanned for. So it's going to have an impact on the out years, you know, within five years. So, you know, things change pretty rapidly in in this utility world, so.
And we would all, we would all understand that this year is another anomaly that was totally unexpected. So it looks to me like we're just compounding oddities here, but thank you. I appreciate the excellent.
Glad to interject. So I guess, well, any more questions on the water side? Because next I'm going to move over to the wastewater. Okay, well, the story there is relatively the same as far as we tried to hold most of our ops and maintenance budgets flat. Again, we have some some minor changes in personnel with with health insurance. We do have two personnel requests that I've made. And then the same personnel request on the general fund electrician, I'm showing that here in this slide. I calculated approximately $700,000 decrease in capital expenditures and debt payments between 2020 and 2021. Again, we we are going to increase the general fund transfer in 2021 as recommended, at least as currently planned, by $89,000 to help the general fund budget with the with the potential revenue shortfalls. And then to talk a little bit more about the personnel requests, we're looking to add two equipment operators to our sewer maintenance division at a budget impact of about $90,000 per year. And these are coming from a recommendation that the city worked on with HDR engineers a couple of years ago to assess our sewer maintenance program, our management program, in an attempt to try to become more proactive and less reactive to increase the frequency in which we maintain all of our sewers in the system. In the past, we generally could get through the system every five years. We really want to get through them every three to four years, and that's with our jetting operations, our our CCTV operations and some of our newer technologies that are designed to help us get through the system a little quicker. This would essentially move us from three crews to four crews. And and the goal here is is to try to get to get to where we're more proactive, reducing the instances of sanitary sewer overflows and discharges to the environment that are caused by blockages in our system. We'll say that we've we've industry standard says you want to have no more than four sewer overflows for every 100, I think 100 linear miles of sewer in your system. We were well above that up till this year. We've actually had a really good year this year and we're on pace to have one of our best years ever, which is good. But in the future, we want to get to where we have four full-time crews and those those two additional equipment operators would would help us out with that. No new equipment proposed with that, so it's really just two new employees. On the CIP side of things, we don't have near the number of large projects in the wastewater side. We do have a couple of projects that we've already talked about. Joint Maintenance Facility is one of them. We have almost a $4 million short share in that. And then the BioSolids land purchase, which we've already approved and we're actually one day away from the 60-day public hearing window to pass that charter ordinance that would allow us to finance that that purchase. And we should be closing here in August on that purchase. We do have a large potential $10 million project at the wastewater plant that we'll probably start planning for in the next five years. That kind of coincides with a a previous improvement project that was funded with a KDT loan. Those payments will be retired and this new project would then come in and we would also do another KDT loan. And to finance that project, again, we're talking about something that's probably towards the end of that six-year improvement plan with design starting and maybe in 2022. And then unplanned projects, just to give you a quick update on on some of the issues we had last year with the the Hayes Drive, sewer failures and sinkholes. We we actually just finally wrapped up one last repair at Hayes and Levy a couple of weeks ago. We had about two or three attempts to try to do a in situ liner project, a repair section of that. We anticipate about another $50,000 to $60,000 bill for that work. But all told, between the two sites, we ended up just north of $800,000 in repairs. We, when we started that, we were thinking it would be over a million dollars. We had, we approved some geo bond financing for that. And we're still waiting to hear about any potential reimbursements from FEMA and KDEM. They have a pretty big backlog, that sounds like, of of claims for 2019. We actually just wrapped up some of the claims from the 2018 floods. So 2019 was a much bigger disaster. We have not even heard from Department of Emergency Management about when we can start looking at reimbursements for some of those projects. So that's an update on those. I figured you'd want to hear a little bit about those. So same same charts for the wastewater with the fund balance, these these include a 3% increase in the out years. You know, we we worked really hard to try and fix this one. We're still kind of what I hope is at the low point in the fund balance for this for this fund here in 2020. Those corrective rate increases we did last year. If if everything comes to fruition, you can see that this fund is hopefully going to be in a much better shape in the out years. We're still nowhere near where we're supposed to be in terms of recommended fund balance, but I think we're going to make some pretty good progress in that in the coming years. Same recommendations into the water, 3% standard rate increase plus, you know, a 3%, excuse me, surcharge for the levy project. Again, these are all proposed to be shown in increases in 2021. Same little bit of information as before on the water side, just showing what that fund balance would be if we did a 6% increase starting in 2021. And of course, that would be a one-time increase and the rest would be 3% increases. And then the same, if we if we decided not to do rate increases this year or next year, what that what that does to the fund balance in the out years are just that. We don't know what's going to happen in the next five to 10 years. This is our best guess. And and that's what it would look like if we didn't do anything this year. So typically I'll talk about customer impacts. I've got some individual slides that I can show you that were in the memo about water and sewer individually. For this presentation, in the interest of time, I'll just show you what the combined monthly water and sewer bill would be. I have the water and wastewater individual slides here in the back of the slideshow if you'd like to see those. But, you know, I always focus on our 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 largest portion of our customer base is that average residential customer. That's who generates most of our revenue from, and it's the most, the largest customer base. So I always focus on that that residential average line here. And 6% increase would result in a combined monthly increase for those customers of $4.22 a month and an annual impact of $50.64. The other thing that I always like to show you guys, but I, you know, I preface this every year by saying this isn't the the bar that which we should use to determine what our rate increases should be, but it's a good tool to have so we know where we're at in comparison to our peers. But this is the the average customer bill, same customer, residential customer that that uses seven units a month in comparison to, these are all cities of the first class plus some of the larger second-class cities. And it includes some of the larger water districts like Johnson County, Water One and Kansas City Board of Public Utilities and Wyandotte in Kansas City. You know, this is a, this shows our current rates, the 3% increase, and then what what we've shown as a potential 6% increase. And, you know, I have to say that this assumes in 2021 that every other city's rates stay flat. I, the only reason I do that is because I don't know what they're proposing for this year. I do know that they are going to raise rates. It's it's inevitable that they are. Just last year in my research, I know about 75% of these cities or municipalities raise rates anywhere from 2% to 10%. So it's assumed that they're going to raise rates. I just don't know what that is. So for all the other cities, you're looking at their 2020 rates for that same average customer. On the water side, we have a very affordable water bill, so we're very fortunate. We're at the very bottom of that list. And even with a 6% increase, we're going to stay at the bottom of the list. So that's that's a good thing to be able to say. It also good because we have room to grow if we need to grow. And and we can, we can still say to to our customers, you know, we have a very affordable water bill. On the same, on the on the wastewater side, it's a little bit different story. We're we're a little bit more in the middle of the pack. I can show you here in the middle, that's our current rate. And then obviously, again, the 3% and the 6% 6% rate increase, same thing. I know that, you know, Wichita, they typically raise their rates every year. The idea here for me is to stay somewhere in the middle third or or the bottom of the the top third. You know, we're not Garden City, but fortunately, we're also not Newton and Bonner Springs. So so generally, we'd like to stay in the middle. So really, that's that's all I had. I do have some other information I can share with you if if you have questions about it. So interested to to get your feedback and answer any questions you come and chat.
Yeah, thanks, Randy, for the presentation. I don't know if there are other commissioners that want to speak to this or is Brian also going to be presenting this evening?
That's that's correct. Mayor Brian Johnson, City Engineers, got a short presentation on the stormwater as well.
Okay. Are there any questions for Randy?
Yeah, I don't have a question. I just want to make a comment. You know, I'd like to see a slide that just shows all the money that's been siphoned off of your accounts. You know, for other things that that went into the general fund, like paying for, you know, dues to the Kansas League of Cities and all those things. Because my concern is this, you know, you start looking at some of the things that are in here, and I know it's not your fault. But, you know, we've got 3.8 million going for the, you know, the the joint maintenance facility, we're paying for the levy. And it looks to me like the, you know, fund balances are getting badly affected by all these transfers because we're using the water department as a hidden tax. We're keeping the middle levy flat, but we're taxing people indirectly by raising their water rates. And it's not to pay for water service, it's to pay for everything else. And that has been disturbing me the past couple of years because I was sold on, okay, no problem. Let's go ahead and raise a little bit of percentage up because then we'll have the money for the true water projects. Now, the levy, you know, maybe fits that bill, but you know, and I know Rob prefaced that if things change, like if we can get the economic development tax that we talked about renewed, that may change the picture on here. But I think you're very adversely affected for all the transfers that come out of there. You you can't take your revenues and target them against your actual job, which is running an enterprise fund. which is running an enterprise fund, because somebody's always reaching in and taking some of your money. And I know you can't do much about that. But that's something that that disturbs me. And, you know, when I see the water bills going up 50 bucks in a year, well, when we raise mill levies, you know, that's only going to cost, you know, 12 or 13 on a homeowner's thing. So so you're actually getting a much worse deal here if you're a property owner, because it it's the total cost of living. And and that bothers me. And and the 2020, you know, 2020 budget we're working on, you know, part of the solution for all the shortfalls is to reach into the water fund. And I've already sent the, you know, city staff and shared with the commissioners my thought on that. I don't want to do that. I want to take it out of something else and leave the water fund alone.
This is a topic that has come up a lot over the years. We debate internally quite a bit on just how much the utility uses the rest of the organization to operate. There are firms out there that actually dive into your organization and can come up with a percentage. Because if the utility had to operate independently, it would need to hire finance staff, it would need to hire HR, it would need to hire legal, and it would need to hire additional management. There are firms that can come up with a percentage, and we've advocated and talked about this, and I think we're about ready to all agree to do this, to hire somebody to come in so we can get this percentage nailed down. So we're not debating this on an annual basis any any longer as to what that percentage should be. So I appreciate you bringing it up, Commissioner, because you're spot on. We need to do this. We anticipate doing it this fall, and we'll nail it down.
Yeah, and I agree, we need to, because part of what bothered me was, you know, some years we charged 100,000, the general fund, for the services you rendered. And then I think last year was 300,000, so something's wildly wrong. You know, we we don't have a good target, and I think that makes the guys managing our utilities, it makes their job a lot harder.
Don't disagree.
Linda Morris, I would just like to say that I own a house in Topeka also. And the combined water and wastewater for that house and my house here in Manhattan, and they're fairly comparable, is about $10 higher each month in Topeka than it is here. And I think that also speaks to the quality of the water we have here because we use wells rather than the Kansas River. And I'm thankful every day that we are not filtering Kansas River water to be able to drink. It's a pretty dirty river. And so I just wanted to say that we do have it better than Topeka does. I mean, there are and even there, you know, even when we make agreements with to add service to other local areas, we have to charge for that and recover some of the costs that we have for that. So I I want to encourage us to continue to do that so that we can keep our system as a whole viable. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. Randy, did you say the electrician was going to be you was one electrician for both wastewater and water?
No, it it would be a single person that would be split. My understanding is that that they would, and Jason probably knows more about this, but you know, that that particular person would be monitored how much time they spend working on on projects that are related to the general fund. And they they track that, and, you know, if there was a need, they could potentially change what that annual general general fund transfer is to compensate for it. We do have a benefit from from having that fourth electrician. It's it's that our three that we already pay for can focus on working at the plants and and other places we need them. So they're they're stretched thin, and, you know, we used to only have one. And now we have three, and we still keep them pretty busy, so we haven't had to use hardly any on call engineering or sorry, on call electrical. We used to we used to hire a company every year to help us out with with all of our needs. And I don't think we've used that in a year and a half. So we've gotten our money towards from the three staff that we have, they're just, they're still spread all over because they they help out with downtown and everywhere else Jason and Rob talk about everywhere that they help out with. They're extremely valuable to us, so. And it's understandable why, you know, Casey and Parks, they have a ton of stuff that they need to maintain.
No, I do think it's essential, but yeah, go ahead, Jason.
We have quality electricians. We really do. They they are very good at what they do. The only thing I would add to Randy's comments, two electricians oftentimes have to go to a job because it's required. It leaves a single electrician wherever at a plant, and they often can't do a lot of their work without somebody else there with them for safety reasons. And there are journeymen and licensed electrician, there are just rules they have to follow. So this fourth electrician will actually allow more capacity and more productivity out of the group long term, so that's that's where we kind of hedge towards. And and Randy's right, we want to track their time, we want the utility to pay for the utility related expenses, but then we'll look at reducing that transfer based on the work done outside the utility.
Right. I think it's extremely important to understand all of these are so interdependent on each other. It's not just in each of their own departments, but they're very reliant on each other. I would also like staff to look into a proposal or a resolution or something when it comes to waiving fees. We have lots of organizations and such good intentions like USD 383 or 20, whatever it might be, where we look at waiving certain fees, especially from connections and such, and see do we have a process in place or do we just do it, you know, because this organization asked for it?
We have, in our ordinance, exemptions that have three, I couldn't quote them to you, but there's there's three major items that the commission has the ability to waive system development charges. They're they're all, for the most part, predicated towards benefits from economic development or combining combining systems or absorbing systems into ours, or, you know, consolidating systems. But there's not necessarily, I would say, a policy that helps us decide who would be eligible for those. It really just, I don't know, Jason, it comes down to who's asked for it. And typically, we haven't said no a lot. That's usually a decision for management.
I just feel like we need to have some kind of a a metric to follow because we don't want to be the bad guy that says, no, we don't want to waive your fees. But we also want to have, make sure that if people, if there is a process they can follow. I mean, what what is it we're looking for? What criteria are they meeting? And I think sometimes we just do it depending on the presenter, depending on the organizer, organization.
And I appreciate that comment. I know other commissioners have made similar comments. It would probably, and you make a great point, let's not do it the night we got the request in front of us. Let's tackle a policy that we're willing to apply across the board. So it's it's a good point and something we can clearly explore for you.
No, I didn't mean to do it.
It'd take a lot of exploring. A simple policy would be run it like an enterprise fund, a business, and don't waive any fees, period. Very simple. People shouldn't be asking, and we shouldn't be waving because there's a cost to running the water department. And anything waived just winds up on a residential water bill in the long run. So we need to just stop the practice, and the commission can do that. Very simple.
One more question, Randy. Do you know how many units have signed on, like when when somebody moves into an apartment or a house just for June and May or July? I'm thinking about if we can gauge how many students are moving in or how many people are moving back into into Manhattan. Is that something you would have information about?
I don't have it currently. I think we'd have to probably have finance or customer service dive into how many new accounts we have on a month by month basis. You know, any given month, we have customers drop off or we add customers. Obviously, it's it's hard being a transient town where students are moving, you know, two times a year, and where you don't know, you know, how many of those are just people that are moving from apartment to apartment. It's hard to track. But also, you know, as far as consumption goes, it's definitely very hard to track because of usage for domestic use versus irrigation or something like that. So really, it's, I think we could, we'd have to use a lot of very simplistic averages in determining on a month to month what that impact could be, but it's really not a great way to do that.
Sure, thank you. Rob, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, just just real quick, I think on your comment, Mayor, and Jason and I can talk. Maybe a policy resolution, like we did similar on benefit districts, might be the solution to what you're all discussing on on waiving fees or, and again, that policy resolution could be, I don't want to waive any fees, or we have certain criteria, so I'll visit with Jason and perhaps we'll find it. The other point I just wanted to make real quick before we go to stormwater with Brian. Commissioner Butler mentioned the water treatment plant, but also the wastewater treatment plant. I just want to remind everyone that both of those facilities are behind the levy. And if the levy were to fail, our only water source, even though you would be completely dry west of 14th Street in six to eight hours, if the levy were to fail, all our wells, our water treatment plant, and our entire system would be shut down. The same thing on the wastewater side. You know, it's 145, 150 million dollar plant that's right, literally right behind the levy. The other thing, too, in our discussions, just to help refresh folks' memory, the reason why we chose the water and the wastewater percentages and and increasing those fees is because we have outside customers that we serve in bulk. So the Blue Township, the Consol Water, the Consa Sewer, those increases will be passed along to those customers that use those facilities that receive either treated new water or treated wastewater. So I just wanted to to build upon some previous comments. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you and see if there's any other comments from Randy or questions.
Thanks a lot, Rob. I think we're ready for Brian Johnson, our city engineer, to discuss our stormwater update.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, Brian Johnson, City Engineer. So the item before you now is the Stormwater Fund. I'm actually batting cleanup on fourth tonight, so I'll try to get through the slides here relatively quickly so that we can all move along, get on with our evenings. So hopefully, everybody can see the PowerPoint we have put together here, 2020 Stormwater Fund Update. And just a little bit of background, because I know that not all of you were here when we started the cost of services study. Back to Commissioner Morris's question, that was about 2015, 2016, when that cost of services study started. What we found out on the stormwater side is that the cost of services was both inequitable, and by that I mean the larger runoff areas paid less per unit than the residential houses did. It was also underfunded, so our CIP program that we had built out to 2030, we couldn't afford it with what we had at that time. So in 2018, we went to the commission and the commission approved a five year flattening program. We are in the fourth or the third year of that, 2021 will be the fourth year of that. And I have a slide later on to talk about all five of those years. But the goal of the flattening program and what the cost of services study really told us was whether you're residential, whether you're commercial, if you have 3,000 square feet of impervious area, you're shedding the same amount of water, and that system has to be able to collect and distribute that water to the outfalls throughout the system. That's really what the cost of services study told us, and so by seven or by 2022, we need to get to a 755 in order to keep moving forward with all of our CIP items. The other thing that the cost of services study said, and I don't have it in here, but the other thing the cost of services said was approximately 95 cents out of every dollar that is generated in revenue by the Stormwater Fund goes directly to infrastructure. And I heard the discussion a little while ago about the infrastructure and how important that is, how we need to be able to fund that. 95 cents out of every dollar that's generated in the Stormwater Fund goes directly to infrastructure. It's either inlets, it's pipes, it's outfalls, it's levies. Less than 5% of that fund goes to operations and personnel. So 2019 financials, let's look at last year and see how we ended up. Revenue was actually slightly greater than anticipated, and I think that that kind of gives us a good idea that the model that we generated in 2018 and projected out to 2030, so far, every year we've met or slightly exceeded our expectations. So that's a good sign going forward that our model is tuned in and and we're getting, we're capturing the correct data. Unbudgeted expenses were slightly higher than anticipated. Obviously, some of that is because 2019 was a flood year and we had some extra costs and some extra expenses. We've also helped out the Water and Sewer Fund a little bit by taking some of those bills and transferring them into the Stormwater Fund, so that that helps those funds there a little bit. Unfortunately, the sales tax from last November, that was unsuccessful. Because that was unsuccessful, now we've had to move those levy costs into the Stormwater budget, and I got some slides here coming up to kind of show what that does to the fund. 14.4 million dollars is a substantial hit to this fund. This fund generates anywhere from 2.7 to about $3 million. So as we start talking about CIP projects here in just a minute, when we talked about three and four and $5 million CIP projects, you're talking about a project that is literally the entire year revenue for that for that fund. So one thing I did want to talk about is the community survey, and we haven't seen this here in a little while. I think this one's from 2018. Just to remind everybody, Stormwater Infrastructure, the only thing that rated higher than that in the community survey was arterial streets. Stormwater was second to arterial streets as far as public works, priority projects. Unfortunately, Stormwater also was very high up or very low on the satisfied list. So as you go to the right, these are things that people are satisfied with, the survey said we're satisfied with. If you go to the left, it's less satisfied. And so the farther upper left you are in this graph, the more unsatisfied responses we got. Obviously, Stormwater Infrastructure's up left, so there's a lot of a lot of customers out there that that want to see some Stormwater Infrastructure and want to see some progress made. So back to the cost of services study, 2021 will be the fourth year of the five year plan. And here we have, so 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021, we we are proposing a 642 commercial and a 692 residential. Back to Randy's slides, the average utility bill is about 75 to 80 dollars a month. And so that 692 is less than 10% of your overall utility bill. It's averaging about 7% to 8%. So it, 642 and 692 is not a substantial amount of money compared to a monthly utility bill. Again, trying to get to the 755 commercial residential by 2022. So just to talk about some projects here quickly, because I heard the discussion about infrastructure earlier. This project is actually underway. It's downtown south from sewer improvements. About a five and three quarter million dollar project. That's a bunch of inlets, storm sewer pipe along points and down Sixth Street. Comes down, it connects with a large outfall down here, actually down by Fourth and Potawatomi. That's where it outfalls and down into the Kansas River. Project consists of over 30 new storm sewer inlets. Here's some pretty large inlets, boxes. Again, trying to capture that storm water, get it underground as quickly as possible so it doesn't go outside the right of way, get get outside of sidewalks, up into people's front yards. Over 7,000 lineal feet of large diameter pipe. There's a lot of pipe going in the ground in this project, and that's why it's $5 million, because it's this is substantial investment in infrastructure. Again, partnering up with Randy on these, as we do these projects and as we go through the downtown areas, we also are installing all new water mains. So we're getting the two bang for the buck there with water and storm sewer funds, trying to get everything addressed while we're in those older neighborhoods. This is actually a betterment project, and it is right here at Caseman and Hayes. I know we've had quite a few discussions about this. The downtown master plan showed three eight by eight reinforced concrete boxes. We actually threw some modeling with the Corps of Engineers and with some modeling with Wood and Olson, we've actually been able to decrease that to two RCBs. So partnering with the with the Corps on this betterment actually has reduced significantly the cost of this project. We're down to two instead of three. This is a betterment project. It was one of those projects that Rob talked about. We had budgeted, and it doesn't impact that levy surcharge. This is another project, Randy talked about this a little bit, the TCB North Ditch Project. This is his This is his line pits he was talking about. Currently, this Bertrand Box System discharges down by IHOP, and then it slowly runs south down to the Pretty Ditch. What we know is that the Pretty Ditch is extremely undersized. Pretty Ditch can hold about a two- to five-year event. That's all it can hold. Once that Pretty Ditch backs up, this is where we get all of our flooding down on Third and down on Carney, because the Pretty Ditch is full. We can't physically get more water into that ditch. This project will capture that Bertrand Box, and eventually it'll capture stormwater coming down Carney, and then it'll carry it all north up and through this betterment project with the Corps. Right now, we just have the channel part under design, plan on bidding that in about 2021, 2022, after the levy's done. But again, we're working from the outfalls uphill, so that we have that capacity downstream to get water through that levy. This is the South Manhattan Outfall, and we've, we've just started on this. In fact, a couple of you sat in on the selection committee. We just started on this project. We originally looked at this as part of a betterment, but after talking with the Corps and kind of looking at some modeling, we broke it out, and it's not part of a betterment now. We're actually going to do this as a separate project. This project will intercept stormwater coming down Points, coming down Yuma Pier, from South Manhattan back to Seventeenth Street. Not only does this eventually go up to Aggieville and help out Aggieville, it also goes to Fourteenth and Anderson. And as we all know, Fourteenth and Anderson is a significant choke point in our system. It's frequently, we have problems at that intersection. A two-year event will flood that intersection. So while this shows just South Manhattan, and yes, it's going to pick up a lot of stormwater down there, it's also eventually going to head up to Fourteenth and Anderson. This is phase one of a two-phase project. So 2020 fund balance, what we had last November before that election was unsuccessful, is what the fund, fund balance looked like, and it actually was in pretty good shape. You can see we had just a small delta here that we had to make up between now and about 2027, 2028. That's what the fund looks like with the levy included in it, without a surcharge. So we just go through the flattening process. We don't add that $1.66 surcharge. By 2027, the fund will be actually negative. We actually won't be able to write checks out of that fund. Which is why we had gone back through that process and looked at that surcharge, what Rob was talking about earlier. So if we do add that $1.66 surcharge in 2020, this is what the fund looks like. Obviously, we still have this delta here or this gap, but obviously the, the fund is, is positive out to 2030. That's our, that's our planning horizon. We usually look at about 10 years. I would want to show you also that the fund actually is slightly above projected balances or recommended balances. But the reason why is, as Rob was saying earlier, we're trying to generate revenue to pay for those big projects so we can put down payments on them. Because if we don't, if we wait till the end, we're not going to be able to, this $1.66 is going to be substantially more, because we won't, we won't have that down payment on your home or on your vehicle. That's why we've, we've come up with that $1.66 revenue surcharge. Again, our Pure Cities, this is a slide I show every year, kind of showing what our other Pure Cities look like. I have included the 642, which is the fourth year of the flattening, plus the $1.66. So this is, you know, the worst-case scenario, the all-in scenario. One thing that we'll notice is that, we're actually, for the small businesses, we're actually pretty competitive. We're actually one of the lower, lower cities in, in the state. As we get up to the, to the biggers, to the Walmarts, the Home Depots, the Targets, the huge, huge parking lots, impervious areas, shedding a ton of water. We're about in the middle of the pack, slightly higher than some, slightly lower than, than others. We're about even with Lawrence, the Wichita's, the Overland Parks, and the Lenexa's. Now, while these numbers look really small, I do have a little side note here. Wichita has two mills dedicated to stormwater, which on a, on a Walmart-sized business would add about $1,000 a month. So while those look like they're a lot cheaper than us, by the time you get all of those, as Commissioner Butler said, those hidden taxes included in that stormwater fee, it's actually up around this $1,500 a month again. Overland Park has about a mill dedicated to it, which is about 500 a month. So Overland Park's about 1,200, 1,300. And then Lenexa actually has a development surcharge fee. So not only do you pay more in Lenexa, you also pay when you go get your building permit for your building. So again, Hutch, Wichita, you know, we're very competitive. We're in the middle of the pack, which is where we like to be. I will mention that for those of you that have been on the commission a while, you remember when we started this, we were actually by far the cheapest. And it showed because our infrastructure really was not in great shape. So some of the future CIP projects, which we have in this graph, some of the things that are driving that graph down and up, creating that delta. The TCB North Channel Project, which I just showed you, about $3 million, and that's actually under design. We're going to wait until the levy project is probably half to three-quarters done, then we're going to bid this project out. South Manhattan Interceptor, that other project I showed you. Eventually, that project is going to go all the way to Blumont Avenue up to Aggieville. Help reduce flooding in those areas. Casement Road 2022, if you recall from last year, Casement Road actually was in 2021. We moved that project back a year because we didn't get our TA grant. This project is, is to be done with a TA grant, put a trail over the top of that and close this. So because we didn't get our grant, we moved that Casement Road back one year to 2022. Carney Street, Third Street Outfall, 2022 also. This is that flooding area down by the Dairy Queen and down by Peerless Tire. Again, I have to get the North Channel done first in order to come back and do this second. From there, excuse me, from there, we go to the Fourteenth Street Interceptor. And the Fourteenth Street Interceptor is actually the next phase of the South Manhattan. Fourteenth Street will go all the way up Fourteenth from Points, all the way to Anderson, Blumont, help pick up that overflow water. And just, just for your knowledge, when, when Fourteenth Street overflows, all of that water runs through Aggieville, down Blumont, through the Hotel District, all the way down to Fourth and Blumont, which we all know is, is a significant flooding area. Middle Carney, so the Middle Carney system actually parallels this Carney and Third Street. And Middle Carney is, is to get all the way to South, or North Manhattan, to pick up Campus Creek overflow water. When that Campus Creek jumps out of its banks and floods that Bertrand Box, all that water runs down to Carney and then Carney down to Third. So that's what all of these projects are designed to do. They're designed to help pick up those large overflow events. They're interceptor projects. They're large capital-intensive projects.
How, how long does it take that South Manhattan Interceptor to be finished?
The South, well, we're not even, we don't even have a design contract yet. We're going to start with a design contract. Are you talking about South Manhattan or the South?
Yeah, the South Manhattan. You, I see that, you said it ties into the Fourteenth Street Interceptor in 2024.
Yeah.
What's the timeline look like generally?
I would say completion of that probably 2022, 2023. We're going through another process of kind of modeling that system, because we have added some detention upstream of the South Manhattan project. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we came to the commission with a Riley County Health Department detention pond expansion project. We actually expanded the detention pond, detention pond at Riley County Health Department a couple of years ago. So we're going to remodel that system and see if we can't reduce the size of some of those structures, because those structures are every bit at $3,000 to $4,000 a foot. So if you can reduce that cost, you can easily save several hundred thousand dollars. So we have a contract right now with Olson and Wood to remodel that downtown watershed. Then we'll be back before you with a design contract, and then hopefully get to construction 2021, 2022. So options for stabilizing the fund in the out-years. And again, you know, we're talking about out-years, 2026, 2027. But as Randy showed earlier, you know, a 1% increase now makes a huge impact down the road. So we do have some, some options for stabilizing in the out-year. Implement year four, the proposed five-year flattening in 2021. Implement the $1.66 equivalent unit surcharge for levy project. And that $1.66 would be a dollar for every, $1.66 extra for every residential property in the city. If you're a Walmart, that adds up to about $200 to $225 more a month. But for a residential home, it's $1.66 on about a $75 to $80 a month utility bill. And again, that buck 66, it was in my memo, I want to reiterate it here. The $1.66 is actually revenue neutral. It generates enough revenue to pay that bond for the levy, and that's it. It doesn't create extra revenue to go do additional project. We anticipate somewhere between a 4% to 6% increase in out-year through the budgets. A lot of that's going to depend on how that levy costs come in, and if they're on cost, if they're below cost, above cost. But we're anticipating right now about a 4% to 6% increase in out-year budget. One other option that Lenexa does, they actually have a connection fee, where you pay a connection fee when you come get a building permit. That's about the only other system out there that, that I could find or that I've talked to with our Pure Cities about, about how they generate revenue. That was one thing that Lenexa does. They actually have a connection fee, is what they call it. So when you come in to get your building permit on your new building, you pay a, a fee based on that. That kind of starts into that whole fee and lieu that we talked about a couple of months ago that we're going to come back to the commission and talk about a little bit here towards the end of the year. But that's one option for, for how Lenexa does. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Brian, Linda Mars. That statement on the slide, that just, yeah, that one, anticipate a 4% to 6% increase. Is that an increase every year through 2030 of that amount?
So we have, right now, this graph here shows a 4% increase from now till 2030. In order to get this line to follow that curve. A 4% increase on...
That's 10 years, so that's like a...
A 4% increase on $7.55 would be about 25 cents a year.
I just think there's a, there's a, a rate at which it becomes difficult to
Sure.
raise the rates year after year after year. And I, this is ambitious, but we know that Manhattan has flood issues. And we have people whose basements flood regularly, and I know that you're racing to try to, you know, fix those. There was something on, on Allen Road for a lot of years, and I think you, I'm hoping that you fixed that. And that Hayes Drive sinkhole, and those are just, we have a plan, and then we have million-dollar interruptions. But I just think that there's a tolerance level by the time we just keep raising water, wastewater, and storm. So my question is, when we get through with this big, long list you have, can we be through? I know the answer is no.
I wish we were through now, because my phone would ring a lot less, but...
Can we stop some of this? But yeah, okay. You don't need to even answer.
If you look at this list, though, I mean, you've got a great point. If you look at this list, there's not a lot of cities on this list that have four, five, six miles of levy system and have two major tributaries that come together in their city. There's nobody on this list that's spending $15 million this year on a levy.
Yeah.
It's just the topography that we have to deal with. It's the terrain we have to deal with. Again, you know, some people, some cities, they, they do, you know, property tax mills. There's, there's all sorts of different ways to fund it. We've decided that we don't want to do it that way, that we think we should do it through a stormwater fee, through an enterprise fund. But again, it's our topography that we have that, that, you know, we just have to live with, we have to deal with.
That's fine. You don't have to go any further.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Brian. Other questions for Brian, Randy, or Rob? And then we'll go into discussion about the rates and for all three of them right now. And this is just for discussion, so just to be clear.
Well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Brian. You know, one thing I see from all of this is how much, all three of you kept referring to the sales tax from 2019 and the impact on the levy. And we tried, like I said earlier, tried to make that the priority when we were moving forward with that sales tax initiative. And it just kind of got convoluted with all the other noise that was going on with it. But this is a project that we need to do, considering we're getting the majority of the funding from the federal agency. So I wanted to just open it up for questions as far as the rate increases and any suggestions or recommendations for any of our city staff here.
Had us all here. I, when it comes to the, the stormwater, if, yeah, if, I would hope that maybe if we could get the, the new sales tax to pass, we could shift a little of that tax payment, or the payment for that project over to some of the money that would come in from the sales tax, perhaps. But of all of the things that the city needs to be working on, stormwater improvement has got to, stormwater runoff improvement has got to continue to be a high priority, because, yeah, people don't tolerate high stormwater fees, but they tolerate flooding a lot less. And so there's just, we've got to get that water underground, and we've got to get it off the streets, and we've got to get it out of the hotels and out of the Dairy Queens of the world. And even with the ditch, I was amazed when they built Chick-fil-A, how high that had to be built to get it up out of the water area from the Pretty Ditch in front of Hobby Lobby there, because it was just, it's like, wow, is that water potentially going to come up that high that we got to get it out of there? And so apparently that's the case. So, yeah, I, if we're going to fund the, the levy out of stormwater, then we've got to do the stormwater thing. When it comes to the water and the wastewater, I wish KDHE would quit changing the rules on the, on the wastewater, because that is a constant source of expense to us, ever more tightening the screws on what's allowed that way. And so, I don't know, we can't apparently get around that very much. And so, but yeah, it's, you know, either you're going to pay property taxes, you're going to pay higher utility fees. I don't know what, what the alternative, yeah, this year, we could raid the funds less by doing economic development money, if we feel confident that we'll be able to replace that economic development money with the sales tax. And if we don't use economic development money, I don't think any of us have the stomach to do all the cuts that were proposed last week or the week before. None of those were, taking it all out of park recreation is not tolerable and acceptable, taking a 5% or 10% cut across the board. We don't, I don't think anybody's got the stomach for that either. And so while it's not easy to raid the utility funds, it's easier than, than making the tough cuts, which nobody wants. We don't want to do it. The public doesn't want us to do it. But if we're committed to the no property tax thing, then we're going to have to do it. And then if we could get the sales tax thing to pass, we could ease a lot of these other tax increases and rate increases, I would hope, to the point where it wouldn't be that big a deal. But it's, we're danged if you do, or danged if you don't. Either going to be property taxes, or we're going to have to raise some of these fees, because when we have to do the projects, you got to have the money from somewhere, I guess.
You see, I, I've always thought the levy was, you know, number one on that projects list, and, and it was unfortunate that sales tax didn't pass. And I, I don't see any other way to do it except with that stormwater fund and that, you know, additional surcharge will, will take care of it, but, but it's, it's like, you know, Rob mentioned, if, if the levy fails, it wipes out the entire city water system. And so that, that's why that's always been number one on the list. And then I'd only just ask that, you know, some of these others, we need to take a real hard look at, and I hope we can get a replacement tax in there so that, you know, we're not funding, you know, major parts of the maintenance facility through the water fund. Though I know that the maintenance facility will support some of that. But when you get 100% out of there, that just seems to, to skew it. And I hope we can put together a policy that says, you know, we're going to stop waiving all these fees and stuff, keep as much money in there as possible, so that we can put all those pipes in the ground and then get this flooding stopped, you know, permanently.
Linda Mars, I appreciate Mark, your summary, and I agree with it. I just know that this is a particularly unusual year. Uh, I just know that this is, uh, a particularly unusual year, and I have no idea what next year will be. And so, uh, you're right, we haven't, we, we all think that we would like to stop depending on these enterprise funds. But I, I don't know that we can, as we have just talked, so, um, I'm committed, uh, I'm the North, well, I live in Northview. And the levy, um, has a huge impact on this community. It doesn't necessarily, I've learned, does not protect Northview, but it is a, something that's, uh, so important to this community. And, uh, I'd like to position ourselves so that we could, I do more for Northview long-term, after, probably twenty years after we get this paid for. But anyway, just, uh, just to let, just to say that the, this is really important that we move on and that we keep, these funds cannot operate in the red. And it's easy to see from the projects that Brian outlined and Randy outlined, the, uh, the, how, uh, the heavy load to fix our infrastructure, when you consider we are an eighteen sixty, uh, community also. And our downtown and our new, our new developments are paying their way, for the most part, with their, uh, benefit districts, certainly not the main roads. But our downtown is where all of the water comes and all of the wastewater comes. And so that route from, uh, uphill to downhill is very logical. And we just have to consider it a cost of doing business.
Thank you. Commissioner Astorbrook, did you want to add anything?
Just, uh, kind of, I agree with everyone's comments about this. Uh, I, I do see the, how it ties into, um, the discussion earlier about the, the infrastructure needs. I think, uh, Commissioner Haddasal's point on that is, is well-received. If we can shift some things around this period of time, in my view of where we're at as a growing community, or what we are as a community, is kind of taking care of the, 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 the tough work of, of putting our city in a position to actually grow. I kind of reflect back that my, my grandma's a hundred and two, she lived on Juliet and Veteer. And some of our water and wastewater systems, uh, are, are a little bit older than her. Uh, and then so I think we have a lot of work to do, that flooding issue, uh, is prevalent. And if we can use some of that, that funds in the future, or how we, we do have to take care of the levy, everybody's already restated, so I, or said this, I won't restate everything. But the, the tough work of taking care of what is underground, those water lines, the sewers, the stormwater, the drainage. That is kind of the neglected side of economic development, um, that people don't always see. And it's important for the future for us to be able to grow and be, be in a position to create those jobs.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things, the levy has been such a priority, um, for a while. One of the things we've been fortunate was not to have any floods this year, uh, not to have heavy rains. But I do know when we have rains, it just kind of comes in a less than twenty-four hours, and then we're all trying to make sure everybody's taken care of. But, uh, this is a project that we can't neglect, and I think that's the highest priority, um, for all of us. And the community doesn't really see it until that flood happens, and it's best to, um, get some infrastructure in place. It's sad that the sales tax didn't pass last year, but we do have some, a path forward that's been presented, and I think that's the, that's the path we should be following. Um, I think in the long run, we'll be better for it, and it's going to be expensive in the short term. But again, it, it's going to take a whole lot of work and a whole lot of manpower at the same time. And hopefully, we won't have any major rains, we've had a really, uh, you know, a pretty warm winter. And a pretty good spring and summer and probably fall as far as the rain season is concerned. Um, but we want people to have, uh, everything in place so they don't get displaced anymore, or there's not any flooding issues.
Knock on wood.
Yeah, I mean, haven't, you know, we're still discussing the nineteen ninety-three flood. Every time we reference something, we're still referring to nineteen ninety-three, nineteen ninety-three, because that, we're still recovering from some of those initiatives. So let's, let's continue, and anytime if we can even tap into FEMA funds along the way or any other resources. Uh, I don't know if KDOT has anything, you talked about Stephanie and the MPO, I don't know if there are any other types of, um, funding sources for these. Uh, but certainly, it is the right direction to go, and we can't, we can't not do it, we are obligated to do it, so. Are there any other questions or, or discussion, uh, this evening? And then we'll move on to budget in the next few sessions as well. Jason, is there anything you wanted us to discuss further this evening?
No, I, I think you've touched on it, next week, August fourth, our public hearing on the budget. Uh, a lot of this conversation here at the end will come back up and, and we'll have more dialogue and, uh, get some feedback and direction, uh, next Tuesday.
Sounds good. Um, if there's nothing else from city staff or for city commissioners, we, we can adjourn.
Vote next Tuesday.
Yeah, yes, right, August fourth, don't forget to vote in the primary, I think you can still send in your mail ballot, and advanced voting is still there right now. Thanks for that reminder. Okay, with that said, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.